There you go, all set.
All right, at 6:30 PM, calling to order the April 6, 2021 meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectment. Hi, everybody. Let me read the governor's intro and then we'll call it to order again. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Watch Act 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Southborough Board of Selectment will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and their parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Southborough website at www.southgrowroutown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at www.southgrowroutown.com/remotemeetings. Now, in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. And I'll just note for the record that I think there may be some other boards or committees that will also have quorums tonight, and so I'll hold this governor's notice into that as well. So, again, calling to order, and hi, everybody.
Good evening.
All right, first order of business is public comments. All right. None to get things going. So our first item of business under scheduled appointments is a volunteer interview with Alexandra Mills for the Scholarship Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2022. And I'm assuming that Andrew Mills is Alexandra Mills. Ms. Mills?
Yep.
Hi, how are you?
Well, thanks. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well, and I am Andrew's wife.
The notice on our little board gave you away.
Yeah, my computer was giving us some trouble, so.
All right, well, first things first, thank you very much for submitting your citizen activity form. And it's, I think most of our boards and committees are worthwhile endeavors, but certainly the Scholarship Advisory Committee is one of them. And I think what we would, generally what we'd ask you to do is to just give a quick thumbnail sketch of why you're interested in the position and how you see yourself contributing. Fair enough?
Fair enough. So, quick, I've been thinking about getting a little bit more involved in the town with Andrew's as my motivation. And I was walking my dog with Isabel Murphy, who is on the scholarship committee. She said that they needed some volunteers, and I figured it would be a great opportunity to dip my toe into town, you know, town politics, town, helping with the town on that committee. And I, as a teacher and a parent of three children, two there in college and one that's in high school, I just thought this is a really great opportunity, and I'd hate to see them not have a quorum and these scholarships not go out to students who are deserving. So, as a teacher and knowing how important education is, I just think it's a really, I'd like to be a part of giving people the opportunity to continue their education.
All right, well said, and Isabel Murphy is not an easy person to say no to.
Exactly, very true.
All right, just some thoughts and hellos from the other members of the board. Ms. Brascio?
Good evening, Alexandra. Thank you so much for stepping forward. Just one quick question, is this your first time serving on a board for the town or committee?
It is for the town, yes. I was on the board of the kinder group board a few, quite a few years back, but so I was on that committee, but that is, and then I was on committees when I was working as a teacher. You know, in the public school system, I was on the committee to decide the math, what math program that the elementary school I was working with would use and stuff like that. So I have had some experience with committees, but.
Great, great. Well, thank you. Thank you for stepping forward. I think it's always interesting for us when somebody does step forward and somebody new. So, thank you very much for that, and I look forward to supporting you. Thank you. Thank you, Marty.
All right, Ms. Malinowski?
Hi, Alexandra. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you for putting your application in, and I look forward to supporting your appointment.
Thank you.
And Mr. Shea?
Thanks, Alexandra, for volunteering. I think your experience, your past experience as a teacher is going to be very valuable to that committee. It's good to see that the new life on the committee that we have, we had a couple of other appointments a month or two ago to that. It's always a fun night for a selectman, attending the scholarship presentations, and hopefully we'll get to be able to do that again sometime soon in person, and I look forward to supporting you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Brian. Mr. Stivers?
Thank you, and I'll echo my colleague's comments. Thanks, Alexandra, for stepping forward here. I think you'll do a great job on this. This is actually a pretty interesting committee. A lot of boards and committees have to struggle with spending money. This group is to give it away, which is entertaining and exciting and very rewarding. A lot of people are very appreciative of the opportunity that the scholarship committee provides, and I think that's a very satisfying job. So, good luck and thank you for volunteering.
Well, thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
And Ms. Mills, my final comment before we entertain a motion is, it, Mr. Shea is right, it is one of the, it's unfortunate that, for a lot of reasons, that we're in this current environment, but it is one of the, one of the highlights of the year to see the young people, I mean, who end up getting scholarships from the scholarship committee. It restores your faith to see those faces, so it's a very worthwhile committee. And with that, I will move to appoint Ms. Alexandra Mills to the Scholarship Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2022.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Stivers, discussing on Ms. Brascio.
Hi.
Ms. Malinowski?
Hi.
Mr. Shea?
Hi.
Mr. Stivers?
Hi.
And Mr. Healy is I. Congratulations, Ms. Mills, and we won't occupy any more of your time tonight, but thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I look forward to it. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, next up for us is review of the FY22 departmental budgets. And as we discussed at a couple of previous meetings, we're focusing on the larger departments. And going through the budgets and talking to some of the department heads, which I'm sure many, probably all of you have done during the last several weeks or months. One of the things that struck me is that there may be a limited number of questions. I mean, Mark, you and Brian did a very nice job in coordination with the various department heads. And so I guess almost, almost like a consent agenda for, particularly for the fire department, for the police department, the library, the building department, and for public works. For which of those is somebody going to have some questions or comments, and we can bring over the department head? Or maybe none?
I have library and public works.
Okay. Anything else? Again, I think, you know, kudos, Mark, to you, Brian, the rest of the team, and to the chiefs and the department heads. You know, we laid out some guidelines at the beginning of the year about how we view the budget and how we view additional positions and the like. And obviously, you know, you guys sharpened your pencils and did a very nice job putting together budgets in all of the departments, but particularly the ones that I mentioned. So, are we all set then?
Can I, can I add something? Sorry. I just wanted to take a second and just thank all of the department heads that are listed on here and the others. I know a lot of us have actually gone to them and gotten our questions asked in advance of the meeting tonight. So I just wanted to thank them for their patience and for taking, always being available and taking the time to answer the questions that we have. That's all. Thank you.
Marty, can I have one comment?
Sure, Sam, go ahead.
I'd also add, kudos to the advisory committee. I've been following their meetings, and I think they've done a great job going through all of these budgets. And the advisory committee plus Mark and Brian, I think, have, again, looked at these things from all angles and looking for opportunities to do more efficient spending, et cetera, et cetera. And I think there's some good ideas represented in these budgets, and I support them. Don't have a comment or question about these particular ones, so thank you.
Okay. And Chelsea, you said library and building or library and public works?
Public works, sorry.
Okay, for the chiefs and department heads, I will look to see if you have your hands raised, to see if you want to weigh in at all. It's always a good thing that if you're winning, that you keep quiet. So, maybe it's in your best interest not to raise your hands, and I don't see any hands raised. So, all right, we're not going to take votes on these tonight, but obviously I think you can, you can read the room pretty easily that we are quite comfortable with the budgets of your respective departments as presented. So again, thank you all for your good work, and appreciate your being here tonight, but we're going to let you go early. With that, Mr. Donovan from the library is with us, and I'm going to turn first then to Ms. Malinowski. Chelsea?
Thank you. Hi, Ryan, how are you?
Good. I do, sorry, before you even ask, Chelsea, but we do have a quorum of trustees, present library trustees, and they posted a meeting. So I don't know if we want to have them convene in session for this or not.
I think, I think it's probably a simple question, but it's up to you. You want to have them.
Right, I think unless we engage, unless they are come over and engage in Congress, you know, in discussion and conversation, I think you're okay without convening a meeting. But if somebody from the trustees, any one of them wants to weigh in, I think then you would have to follow that path.
Well, should they, can they, they can raise their hand, right, if they want to?
Yeah, if they want to, obviously, any of the trustees out there, if you want to participate, it sounds like it might be a pretty simple Q and A that Ms. Malinowski has in mind, but I'll keep my eyes open to see if a hand goes up. Okay?
Okay.
And Ryan, I know you and I have been going back and forth over the last day or two. So I just had a follow-up question. Can you just outline what the short-term projections look like for staffing for the library?
So I think, for the most part, staffing is going to stay pretty consistent with what is budgeted now, with sort of one exception, which is in the past year, we've been engaging with the personnel board. We would like to eventually add a teen librarian position into the SAP, but we wouldn't be looking at adding a seventh full-time staff member. We would like to, if we have a staff member who retires or through attrition, we'd like to sort of, we'd like to sort of convert an existing full-time position into the teen librarian position. So that's, that's sort of the current long-term plan. And I think, I think the, from our meetings, we're planning to engage on that with personnel again next year, so not for this upcoming town meeting, but for the one next year.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Does anyone else? Just give me a signal if you want to follow up on it with anything. All right, Ryan, I think we're all set. And again, thank you for the, for the nice job you did in conjunction with the financial team on putting together your budget and to the trustees as well.
Thank all of you.
All right, and the trustees and yourself can cut out early as well. And next is public works. I don't see Karen.
So, I think that's okay. I think, I didn't have a specific question for Karen. I think this is more for us, just to make note of. So, the recycling line item went from $235,000 to $290,000, and I did look at the usage through March 23 of this year. So I think, I think that's a good number based on where we are year-to-date. I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of whether we want $100,000 to be included off of the tax general fund. Because if we don't look at sticker fees increasing, then I think the amount that's going to come out of the general fund will be higher. So I just want, I don't think we need to just make a decision on that tonight. I just want to make sure that we have it soon so that we know how much needs to come out of the general fund.
And Mark, is that something you can address, or do we, I don't see Brian out there, although he may be operating under a different name.
I think, I think Brian's here. I think BPB is Brian. Is that you, Brian? You can raise your hand? Or he can just get brought in?
I don't see, oh wait, no, I do. Brian, did you hear, did you hear Chelsea's comment?
Yes, about analyzing transfer station stickers, I believe, for, yes, yes.
And that $100,000 is the number the Public Works Planning Board has sort of settled on the last couple of times around, is the right area for the hit to the tax base, so.
Several, several years ago, that was the number, there was a negotiation session, a selectmen's meeting. I think when it was still a three-member board, and the board determined that $100,000 was the amount that was going to come out of the tax rate to fund the transfer station, and the rest of it would be borne by sticker fee.
But we still need to take a look at recycling, because that's going to be a problem that we've got to deal with going forward. There's no easy solution to that one. And again, that's something I think the Public Works Planning Board ought to be looking at, but has not taken up.
And the data for the transfer station stickers is usually refreshed annually with Karen and myself and Mark.
Yep. And we discussed it earlier, it was, so I'm assuming that this fits into the discussion we had earlier in the year, that this amount with the, with the current level of the fees is sufficient to cover the, to the cost.
It can always be revisited, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, at least in terms of your best estimate, that's a yes?
It was, I mean, it was a very involved discussion, so, you know, it's, like Mark said, it was sort of a negotiation type thing, so, you know.
Marty, can I ask Sam a question?
Sure, go ahead, Lisa.
Sam, so, seeing as you're on the Public Works Planning Board, I think when Karen was in a couple of weeks ago, we had kind of talked about this briefly, about the rules and regs, and I thought she said that Public Works Planning Board was going to start looking at this and bringing it forth in April. Have you heard those same?
Yeah, I have not heard anything about that yet, so.
Okay.
We've had great difficulty getting a meeting, finding times when people can meet. It took us like three months to get the last meeting set up, so.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Marty.
All right, is it just a quick aside, Sam, is that because of people's schedules, or is that one of the boards that we need to put on a list and make sure we get the numbers up?
Well, that's a moderator appointment, so it would be great to, you know, we've got members, but it's just apparently hard for people to find time, which is frustrating in the Zoom world. It would seem to me it's pretty easy to find a time when people can meet.
Yeah, okay.
It's been a challenge.
All right, well, we're going to have Mr. Semino in in a couple of weeks. Maybe we can revisit those numbers and see.
Moderator and planning board are the two appointees there, basically, but we got five members.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, Brian, I'm sure you're going to stick around, but I think as far as DPW goes. Chelsea, you're all set?
I am, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we are done then. Again, we're not going to take the votes on it tonight, but we're done with fire, police, library, building, and public works. I think it makes sense to just go in order and address information technology. We do not have our new director on staff yet. He's been appointed. What is it, the 19th, Mark?
19th's a holiday, so he's starting on the 20th.
Okay. So the discussion about information technology over, you know, over last year and carrying over to this year is a staffing questions. And this, it relates to concerns that have been raised by members of this board, but also by advisory about the staffing levels. And Mark, you and I spoke offline about how you view things and where they are right now, and maybe you could give a quick capsule summary of where you think things are and why you think the current staffing levels in the FY22 budget are the right ones for going forward.
Well, I'll do the first half. I'm not sure I can do the second half successfully, but the, right now, at this point, we have funding in the budget for a full-time IT manager, and we have funding for a 19 and a half hour, part-time technical position. Right now, that position outside of coverage issues, because we don't have the manager in place, is normally about six to eight hours a week, so we're not getting the full value of the part-time position. I know there's been discussion about, about potentially maybe increasing that part-time position into a full-time position. I'm not, always get, always get a little bit squishy if, you know, we're looking to just add, you know, bring something up to full-time, add benefits in. And, but, but you want to make sure that you give the new manager some tools and some latitude to try to figure out what makes the most sense for them. I'm assuming that manager is going to come back with their view of the world in the department for the fiscal '23 budget, but is kind of going to be bound into the budget that is going to be basically presented before he gets here. One of the things the board may want to consider as a happy medium is potentially putting, so it'd probably be about another $60,000 or so that we'd have to put into the budget for bringing up the 19 and a half hours to 40 hours, and also accommodating a full set of benefits for the new position. One of the things the board may want to consider is putting an additional amount of money in the contracted services line in the budget, in the technology budget. So that way, the manager would have the ability to contract out for some of these pieces, and then can at least have some history as to whether that works well or whether it would be more optimal to have more, more employee hours handling some of those things. So, that, that pretty much synthesizes that, what we discussed.
Okay, so thoughts on, I mean, it is interesting that, you know, the timing isn't being kind to us in terms of our, our new department head coming on board. But just the thoughts folks have, Mark's proposal of not going all in with a, with a second position at this point certainly makes sense to me, but others may have different views. I know folks on, at least some of the folks on advisory have had different views about that for a couple of years. But why don't we start, I think, maybe with Mr. Shea, see if you have any thoughts or comments, Brian?
Yeah, I tend to agree with the approach outlined by Mr. Purple. He and I had discussed this offline as well. And I just, and, you know, I, there's been a lot of discussion about that second position, and, you know, a lot of discussion last year, but even adding the part-time person, whether it should be full-time, and that discussion continues. I just think that we're best served by getting the new person on board, give that person a year, and let's, you know, let that person get familiar with workload, everything that's going on, planning that the technology committee has in mind, along with other work that the, that the new person has planned, and then strategize from there, whether it's best to continue with contracted services on a part-time person, or whether it's, it's best at that person to advocate for that full-time position. I think it really would benefit everybody to have that person, you know, be strongly in the camp of, yes, we need a second full-time position, and, you know, here is why. You know, from what I see on a day-to-day basis, here are the reasons why we need that full-time position, so.
All right, great, thanks, Brian. Mr. Stivers?
Yeah, I guess, I think the need is abundantly clear, and I agree with Brian's comment that it's very helpful to have the new IT manager be able to determine, you know, exactly, you know, what that position looks like. But it seems to me it's prudent to move as quickly as we can to get up to the, to two people staffing. And maybe we put enough money in to, you know, make that change as of January 1st, so the new manager can have seven or eight months here to make a decision and get that underway, so they're up to speed as of 1-1-22, which, again, I think helps mitigate a lot of risk in many ways, that we've been very lucky that we haven't been caught by so far. So I would rather not wait for another full year and find a way to get some funding so the new manager can get up to speed fully by 1-1-22.
Sam, just so I understand, so you are essentially agreeing with what Mr. Purple laid out?
No.
Oh, okay.
I'd rather, I'd rather put money in for a new fully benefited position, starting 1-1-22.
I see, gotcha.
Whatever that number is, and then the part-time position from, you know, now until then, and maybe that part-time person becomes the full-time person, but that would be at the choice of the new IT manager. So I don't know what the, what the increment in money is. It's probably, you know, not a fold 60. If it's $60,000 for a year, it would be $30,000 then to start that as a 1-1, right?
I would, I would allow Brian to crunch the numbers and the benefits.
Something like that.
It'd be somewhere in there, but I think that you could also, you know, do what I'm suggesting in terms of putting it in contracted services, with the understanding that the board is going to, the board and advisory would transfer that money into the salary line near the end, you know, near the end of next fiscal year, if you agreed that was, you know, what you, you know, wanted to do to have that option, so.
I guess I'm less concerned about the mechanism for it, but I just think there is, I mean, to me, the need is really more than two people, and the faster we get to two, the safer we are in terms of covering some of the risks that we're facing every day here. So I'd like to have the flexibility for the new manager to be up to, you know, two people in the department as of 1-1-22, if that's, that's his choice, which I could not believe that it wouldn't be, but it's certainly his call.
All right, Ms. Brascio?
I agree with the approach Mark's taking. I think giving the new manager time to come in, decide what he may need, and I would not be against putting some money into the contracted services line item, increasing that in case, you know, that was needed. And, Mark, where are we currently at as far as, what's our increase at this point? Last I heard, it was just over four. Are we still there, or has that number changed?
So I think it hasn't changed, Lisa. I think it's just over four at this point. And, you know, the, the other item that is going to, you know, affect the tax rate is going to be, you know, whether we, the board concurs with this leasing approach, some of the capital items, which will also take down the tax increase. And so that's something for the board to consider as well.
Okay, so again, I just, I think it's imperative to get the new person on board to allow them the flexibility to decide what they think the department needs. And having the part-time person, I think, in place is great, and if they find they need a little bit more, then to be able to use contracted services, I think, at this point for me, I'm not ready to add another benefited position, so that's where I'm at. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lisa. Ms. Malinowski?
I also agree with Mark's approach. I, I think that there are certain aspects of the IT department that maybe the new director will choose that it makes sense to outsource it, because it's too costly to keep it in-house, so I'd like to allow him that flexibility to do that. And, Mark, do you know if we are still looking to fill the other 12 to 14 hours of the part-time position, or could we take that money and move it into contracted services?
So I know that the, the new director likes to watch our Zoom meetings, so he may be out there now. That's really going to be the first item, Chelsea. We, it's very difficult to find somebody for that few hours. And, you know, we happen to find somebody that, you know, was able to do a limited number of hours, but it's all nights, it's all weekends, because they have another, they have another position. So I think the man, new manager, is going to have to reevaluate how that's being used, and do they feel that there's a better approach that needs to be taken, and then that'll lead to a discussion. I, I, I'm just trying to give the new manager the flexibility to be able to, to figure out what they want to do. It may be, I always get nervous when we add new bodies, new positions, more and more hours, because those become embedded into the, into the budget. And if we can take a look at the contracted approach, and then we have a little bit of history to say, you know what, this actually worked pretty well for us, and I think we're, we're better off going this way, rather than, you know what, this new position isn't what we thought it was going to be, and now we're going to, you know, affect somebody's life and get rid of a position, you know, in order to move in a different direction. So I think the, I'd rather do the bloodless approach before we. I, I think the, I'd rather do the bloodless approach before we, you know, go into the um, establishing another full-time position.
You all set, Chelsea? Okay, thanks. Um, so Mark, I think that's, the, the consensus is reasonably clear in terms of, of uh, that, that, that the approach you've outlined is the approach that makes the, the, the most sense as a as what sounds like it's gonna be a bridge of one form of another. Um, but, but it's a bridge that's gonna be made of the, the new IT um, managers making. Okay?
Okay.
Any other um, questions or discussion items on the IT budget? I, I suspect we're gonna revisit this with uh, advisory next week. Okay, um, last budget is Mary Lou Woodford out. I don't see her.
Yes, she is, I think.
Okay, all right, then I'm, I, I don't see your name, but I'll assume that she's there. Um, we could bring her over. Ms. Woodford, how are you?
Hey, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. So a couple of just preliminary items. Number one, we're not gonna take a, you know, formal votes on, on um, uh, any department budgets tonight. Um, that's number one. Number two, one of the reasons for that is that we've got a uh, uh, meeting with our, the advisory committee next week and obviously want to fold their views into consideration of our own. Uh, and finally, we had a lengthy discussion last week. Was it last week? They all kind of, they're all kind of juggling together at this point. Um, uh, about the uh, the position you, even the Board of Health have taken with respect to what your needs are. So, and obviously all of us were here for that discussion and participated in it. So I don't think there's a need to, let's put it this way, I think we all understand the Board of Health's position in terms of what they think, um, what you all think you need going forward. Um, I, one of the things that I raised last time, some other folks touched on and the like is um, um, is exactly from, at least from a, from a timing standpoint, how set in stone your approach is. And the reason I say that, in, in some respects, the discussion that we just had about, about IT is, is somewhat informative. I mean, one, once you, once you have um, particularly um, included in the budget um, FT positions, then they are there and they bring with them benefits and, and the like. And so it is, it's one of the reasons that at the beginning of this year, our board took a vote not to add any positions this year unless there was an identifiable funding source. And pretty much across the board, I think not even pretty much across the board, I think across the board we have adhered and the departments have adhered to that. So that's, that's one of the places we find ourselves in our discussion with the Board of Health. So I guess one of the things I, I would like to hear before I open it up is whether or not you've given the, excuse me, the board has given, so any additional thought to that? Is there um, is there a phased approach that you all um, would be comfortable with? Um, because as, as it currently stands, the, your budget request is, is more than a, than a hundred percent increase um, in, from one fiscal year to the next. Uh, that is not a comment on, on, on the justifications you've laid out, but it's just a reality in terms of the numbers. And it's, it's a bit of a jolt in terms of the increase in a particular department's budget. So with that as lead-in before I go, and I'll start off with you, Mr. Stivers, after um, 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 his response to my comments and then we'll go from there. Okay?
Yeah, sure. Um, and the Board of Health has uh, really spent a lot of time um, thinking about the need, thinking about what's happened over the past year. Uh, when COVID nineteen hit Southboro, the Southboro Health Department was not only ill-prepared, but poorly positioned to um, really deal with the spread of this illness. And it, to us, it was prudent to look at why that happened and particularly considering, you know, Southboro being one of the wealthier communities in, in Massachusetts that um, the recognition and the identity of public health not being a priority really hit, you know, front and center. And it'd be, it would be negligent if we failed to acknowledge the longstanding flaws in the staffing and the financial structure of the Health Department prior to COVID. As any event that happens, assessing the reasons for this complex issue and why it happened is critical to making things better for the future. And so the board feels really strongly that the two most significant trends that impacted our vulnerability to deal with this pandemic was the underinvestment in our local public health infrastructure and the underinvestment in the health of our residents. And we know we can do better, we know we need to do better. The shortfall in funding over the several years, um, it didn't allow us to complete the standard fundamental public health capabilities that we were, that are, we're required to and regulated to. And we feel that we need to move and fund the um, the infrastructure that we're proposing and that's just the core basic infrastructure, realizing that we can have incremental increases for some of the other things. Um, but the core infrastructure of the full-time admin person, full-time health director and full-time nurse is really the core. Um, there's a lot of other things we need to do and we're regulated and required to do and we're not doing. Um, and, but yet we feel that if we have those three core positions in place, they can seek other alternative funding to try to meet the needs. Um, a properly funded and staffed health department should be able to surveil and predict emerging health threats um, while being able to be agile and respond to um, the demands when, when it arises. Um, public health is, it deals with things that emerge on a regular basis. It's not like, you know, an accountant has very specific things to do at specific times. Um, a, and I can reference some of those when I talk about that. We have three part-time people right now and so things are sacrificing. Um, while these three part-time people are trying to make the Health Department move. Um, we have spent an enormous amount of money and time building our gorgeous public safety building and somehow we missed public health in that. And I, we are, are really pressing um, you and Southboro residents to identify public health as the third leg of public safety. When we think of public safety, um, we should think of fire, police and public health and we haven't done that. Um, many other towns have built public safety buildings and they've included public health and for some reason it hasn't been a priority in Southboro and we're hoping that we can move in the direction to make public health a public safety priority for Southboro. Um, and we recognize that small injections of grant funds, um, as you probably know, we've submitted our, our proposal with four other communities um, for the shared services grant that DPH just uh, released. And although that's welcome to do that, um, that funding will not um, replace or um, improve uh, the public health that we're doing. It's only gonna help us to shore up a little better than we are. Um, we need to have consistent and sustainable funding and in the board's view, the only way to do that is to have three full-time staff, those three positions that we talked about. And as I stated, those are only the core positions. We need to do a lot of other things. Um, inspectional service and epidemiology, all, all of those are the things that are required of public health and we're not doing those. Our, our record retention. I mean, I, I have a presentation, if you want to do a screen share, I can go through all of the requirements because what I've heard from people is that we don't understand what we're not doing. And I, and, and I can put that up, I can share it with all of you. Um, there are many things we're not meeting, we're partially meeting. Um, I can give you an example of um, how our Health Department has responded over the, over time.
Can I just interrupt you for one quick second?
Sure.
Just to, to, to wrap up my question, which, and I, I'll, I'll ask it in a leading way this time. Based on what you said, there is not an incremental approach that you and the Board of Health are comfortable with as opposed to all, the, the three positions that you've identified as core. Is that an accurate statement?
We feel that this is the incremental approach. Getting the three positions is the incremental approach.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna go to Mr. Stivers and we'll, a, again, we had a pretty fulsome discussion and, and presentation last time. I don't think anybody doesn't understand the, 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 the Board of Health's position and the, I don't want to say the argument you're making, but the, but the um, um, the positions you're advocating for and the basis for that. Um, uh, so I'm gonna go to Mr. Stivers and, and uh, uh, we'll start with you. All right?
Thanks and thanks, Mary Lou, for coming in again here. Um, I guess, I, I think as, as I've expressed before, um, I think that uh, the request as it stands is, is a sound one and I certainly support it. I think, again, Marty, you drew the parallel between Board of Health and IT. I think both of those areas are places where we have historically under, under-invested and absolutely imperative to catch up. The difference here, this is a matter of life and death for many people. And so I think that creates even more pressure to do this. Uh, the question, uh, in my mind, Mary Lou, in terms of budget here, follow on Marty's question is uh, I certainly support the change in staffing and I continue to wonder if there is a phased-in way to fund that through whether it be CARES Act or the new stimulus package that's winding its way through Congress. I know that's a challenge from a budget standpoint and that uh, uh, my understanding is we would have to, you know, budget for it and if for whatever reason we can get reimbursed for it, maybe we don't use the full-budgeted funds or something. And that's a, a bit of a risky way to do it, but uh, it seems to me at least that uh, it's worth trying to explore ways to find out to uh, other sources of funding to support that. And ultimately those funds will disappear and we've gotta pay for it all out of the tax base, but it seems to me it's critical to keep that moving to get to the right staffing level here. Are you aware of any of those new programs that will uh, be able to support the, the funding for these positions?
So that's really the basis for our decision uh, that we needed the three full-time positions so that their staffing availability of time to look for those alternative funding to do the other things that we need to have done. We also talked about, I, as you know, we submitted a, a, a request for a revolving fund for our inspectional services. Um, that's a way that all the fees and the, uh, and the permitting fees and all the things from inspectional services can go into the revolving fund and next year that would reduce our budget by as much as sixty thousand dollars. Um, and it's kind of net to the town, but it allows the Board of Health budget to um, to decrease, so it's not, you know, that, that large number. The other thought, I've talked to many other towns, um, and I don't know what we're doing with this, but many towns have used money from their community um, agreement with the medical marijuana facility to support public health. Most towns have used their medical marijuana um, funds that come to the town for public health and public safety. Um, and I, I, I don't know what we get, I don't know what we use, I don't know if that's an option um, to help fund some of this.
Okay, all right, thanks. That's my question, Marty.
Okay, Ms. Brashia?
Thank you. Good evening, Mary Lou. Thank you for coming again. Um, just, just a couple points. Um, other departments in the past, um, you mentioned public safety specifically, we built a public safety building um, have, have um, shown a need, whether through strategic planning or whatnot. And I know specifically the Police Department staggered, you know, they had a concern and they had a need of wanting X number of officers on a shift and it was done um, over the course of three years to add the additional three officers. And I know Youth and Family did a strategic plan and it was, it was the same, it was, it was staggered. I'm not taking away from, again, that you have a need, I'm just concerned that this year particularly, it's, it's a big bite for the taxpayers to take and I'm trying to do, to find a balance in that. Um, and again, it, it, it doesn't take away from, from what you're saying your need is and I appreciate that you're here and you're, you're advocating for the need that you have. I just worry where, this is a really tough year for a lot of families and I even worry at a four percent tax increase, we're, we're still way too high. You know, there are a lot of families that have been impacted and, and a lot of not a positive ways during COVID. And um, so I'm not quite there yet. I think I said that to you before. Um, I'm, I'm just trying to find the balance and, and how we get you, what you need potentially all at once versus a staggered approach. So um, I will, I will just leave it at that. I'm, I'm, I'm just not there, quite there yet. Um, I'll certainly be having a conversation with you offline. Thank you.
Okay, and, and I mean, I think someone had mentioned we want three full-time positions and you know, one of those positions right now, Barbara, our, our administrative person, she's already receiving benefits um, um, for the town. So that's not an additional benefited position. Um, the Public Health Director would be an additional benefited position. Um, the nurse position would be additional benefited, but when Leslie Chamberlain retired, she had benefits. Um, and so it's really just asking for those benefits back um, that, so that we can hire that public health um, nurse um, to do that work.
All right, Ms. Malinowski?
Hi, Mary Lou.
Hi.
Um, so just to follow up on a conversation that we had last time, um, Mary Lou, Carla and I met to clarify um, if something's budgeted for, then um, then we cannot get CARES reimbursement and so we, we did get clarification on that. So I'd actually like to make a motion, um, and I'll explain it after um, I make it. But that we, that this board commits to holding a fall town meeting um, to allow for the Board of Health to um, bring forward their plan then.
I, I will second for purposes of discussion.
Okay, so here's, here's my thinking is um, by holding a fall town meeting, it would allow the Board of Health to continue to operate with the staffing levels that they currently have, meaning um, a forty, forty-hour nurse that they're, that they appointed last week. Um, a public health director and any um, admin assistance that's over and above the budget because it'd be covered by CARES funding. Um, and then with the shared service grant that was applied for, that would give us time to understand exactly what that's going to cover for, for Southboro and be able to then analyze um, what is needed on a, on a long-term basis. Um, and it wouldn't take away from what the, what the Board of Health is requesting for this time.
Mark, let me go to you before I get some comments. Well, would that, let's assume that, let, let's assume that, forget that the vote was taken, let's assume that that happened, that there was a, a, a town meeting in the fall. Would that provide flexibility for the Board of Health for FY twenty-two? Or would we already be locked in because of the financial decisions made at the annual town meeting or something different?
So if, so Ms. Malinowski is correct, if there is something, according to the town accountant and her discussions with the state on CARES, if it's budgeted, it's not eligible for, for reimbursement. So um, I think the approach that, that has been laid out is prudent in terms of taking advantage of as much of the, the CARES Act and the Recovery Act and any grant monies that we may be able to um, which kind of gets back, I think, to the approach Mr. Stivers was advocating for, for uh, IT. So that you basically would look at, you know, maybe the approach, you know, changing the approach a little bit as of January first when um, CARES, uh, CARES is no longer eligible.
I get the CARES element of it and I'm, I'm gonna open up to, to other comments in a second. I get the CARES element of it. Basically, if, if a position exists and the town has funded it, a, at least the, the, the um, direction that we're getting now is that's not a position that is, it doesn't, it's not gonna fall into the, the emergency or whatever the language is that the CARES Act is using for um, for funding from the, the, the money that's being made available by the CARES Act. I, I get that and um, I, I think that's a, thinking about that approach is an important one and I, I can't imagine that regardless of what happens, um, either here or in a um, decision about a fall town meeting, that that's not something that's gonna be a focus of discussion at the town meeting um, in terms of the funding request. I guess my question is, it, assuming, assuming that the approach was adopted not to fund particular positions as part of the budget because it maintained the flexibility to potentially get those positions funded, at least for a certain timeframe through CARES funding, what would we gain in addition to that by having a fall town meeting, if anything?
I think at that point you could start charting the course of what, what the staffing is going to look like or what the depart, you know, what Board of Health is gonna look like, you know, um, after December thirty-first of twenty-one. So, so you're, so you're essentially, I think the decisions that are being put on the table now in terms of going, increasing from fifty-seven hours in terms of going, increasing from 57 hours of weekly staffing to 120 hours of weekly staffing, you know, would basically be delayed, you know, from May, you know, until October.
Okay. Other thoughts about, about Ms. Malinowski's motion? Alright, I see Mr. Stivers hand up.
Call on to that, Mark. If, if we did this with a fall town meeting, could we at a fall town meeting then vote additional funds if the decision were made at that point to continue the full, three full FTEs for Board of Health past 1122? Could we allocate additional funds at that point to continue that staffing through the remainder of FY '22?
I think, I think that's exactly, that's exactly the, well, that's the intent for the discussion. I don't want to say that's the intent of town meeting. So, but I think that that would be the intent essentially is instead of having those discussions in May, you're having those discussions and putting that proposal before town meeting or some form of that proposal before town meeting in October.
And that, the downside there, as I've listened to the Board of Health conversations about the staffing concerns, that creates less certainty in terms of what happens to that position. As of 1122, that's at the discretion of town meeting at that point. So it might be harder to recruit somebody for that position if the funding were not clear. The other question I have is, is around the new stimulus act. I don't have a good feeling of the detail for that, but is that something that then is likely to produce funding that would continue to be applicable for this particular position? For calendar year '22, fiscal '22, '23 kind of timeframe? Do we know enough about what those details are? And does that still have the same budget? If it's in the budget, it's not eligible constraint?
You know what, Sam? You know, we, we, we kind of have an idea of what the total package is going to look like for Southborough. But in terms of a breakdown, in terms of what's going to be available first, you know, is it a little bit of everything available first? Is it going to be only certain pieces? And then you've got to wait, you know, another six months, 12 months until, you know, the rest of it's available. It's, it's, you know, it's kind of the uncertainty we talked about with, you know, with the additional position for IT. It, it's a, it's a difficult time to make some decisions, given the unknowns of, of how some of this funding is going to roll out and what we're actually going to be able to use it for.
Yeah. My concern about the delay in the town meeting is I don't want to leave Board of Health high and dry at the end of the year. When maybe funding runs out, then what do they do? And that gets back to somebody's comment, it affects people's lives if you have to lay somebody off, which would be really unfortunate and even more unfortunate. You'll lose the resources to do the job that the Board of Health needs to be doing here. So, that was my question. Thanks, Marty.
The, and I'll just, and not just because Ms. Brascio has put my arm up behind my back about having fall town meetings, but, but that's not an unimportant factor. I think it's a very good idea generally to, if not every year, think about a fall town meeting just because it is, there's, we're encountering right now. There, there are, there are mop up things that need to be done. Mr. Hagerty out there, he'll, he'll whack my wrist for talking about imposing the additional cost in town meeting in the fall. But I think there are some benefits to it. So, but I'm going to toss this to you, Malinowski, Ms. Malinowski. Is this something you think we need to decide tonight? We could change our mind in, in, you know, a week from now, but are you looking for, 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 for sort of a temperature of the room about whether or not that's something that, that the board thinks makes sense?
I guess I was looking for a commitment from this board. I just think that it doesn't, it doesn't impact the hours that the Board of Health is looking at. And, and also the temporary salaries are budgeted here as well, which is the $16,800. So right now that's getting covered by CARES. Those are the, I believe those are the Pritium nurses, Mary Lou?
Yes.
So, so that's currently getting covered. So I just, you know, I, I think we, we have a funding mechanism right now. Is it perfect? No. But I just think, you know, there's, there's so many uncertain things with the stimulus package that Sam identified. He gives, I think he gives us time to make sure we maximize out on that. And I, I would hate to not maximize out on the CARES funding for the taxpayers. So I guess that's what I'm looking for.
Okay. It looked like you wanted to weigh in. Excuse me, Ms. Woodford. I just want to, we've got a motion pending about a fall town meeting. And so I'm trying to keep the conversation addressed to that. Brian, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I would, I guess, so it's a very, very interesting concept. And I think that it has advantages to taxpayers in a lot of ways. I think it has potential for disadvantages to the Board of Health, as Sam has pointed out, with respect to ability to hire the right person and make commitments in hiring. With respect to the motion, quite honestly, I'm hoping that we don't, I, I don't feel comfortable voting on that tonight myself. I think this is something that, you know, Mary Lou, I'm not sure if you've heard this proposal before. If this is something that Board of Health has had the opportunity to discuss amongst themselves. I don't know if Advisory Committee has had the chance to discuss this as well. I think there's a lot of different opinions on this that, that I would like to hear. If it isn't something that, you know, the full Board of Health hasn't had the opportunity to take up. I think it's kind of putting Mary Lou on the spot here. And it's, so I'm hoping that we could defer vote on this. I think it's a, it's an idea that's definitely needs to be explored more and thought through more. But I just wouldn't want to vote on it tonight. So.
Alright, again, keeping the conversation focused on this, Ms. Brascio, go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, I think I would be more than happy to vote on a fall town meeting tonight. I, for a variety of reasons, not just this. I think it gives us a little bit of flexibility. And I, I agree that we should be using the CARES Act funds if they're there. That was one of the points I had made earlier about, you know, raising the tax rate. And if there is another funding mechanism that we can use to give the taxpayers a break, then, then I would certainly be interested in having that conversation. And I know also in our prior meeting, Mary Lou had mentioned that the state is, is looking at, I don't know if you said it was a stimulus, but some type of public health reform because we're not the only community that's kind of in this position. And I think that would give us a little bit of flexibility to see what's out there as well. And I, I just think it would be a shame not to be able to utilize the, the free money, if you, if I will. It's not really free, but to best utilize the CARES Act. I mean, any way that we, we could do that, I would certainly be, it would be worthy of exploring.
Sam, is that your hand?
Quick comment. I guess I'm more in alignment with Brian on this. I absolutely do not resist having a fall town meeting. But given as we've talked, this is a very fluid situation these days. I'm not so compelled to vote to commit to it as, as opposed to keeping our mind open to it, to be prepared to, you know, deal with whatever comes over the next several months here and in terms of funding sources, et cetera. And seriously consider having a fall town meeting, which if there's a good reason to do it, I'm certainly on board for it.
Marty, can I just add one, one thing to that? So Sam, Sam, I don't disagree with you, other than I think if we were going to consider or even ask Board of Health to consider using CARES Act funding for this, I would imagine the taxpayers and Board of Health are going to want some form of commitment that this, this discussion isn't going to end there. That's how I view it. It's, it's a commitment to try to give Board of Health what they need, but to find a way to do it that doesn't have as large of an impact on the taxpayers. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Chelsea, let me ask you, would you, would you accept an amendment to your motion before I make a motion to amend your motion? That it's, that it's more of a soft commitment at this point? I mean, I think there is a, again, I, I will, I will be surprised if I would not support a, a vote for fall town meeting. In some respects, it's meaningless if we vote that tonight because until we actually set a fall town meeting, then a fall town meeting isn't set. I, I, so I guess that's my question. Are you, are you, are you comfortable with a more soft commitment that we will continue to explore and, and pursue a fall town meeting? If it fits with, with, among other things, pursuing as much of the CARES Act funding as possible, particularly having to do with the Board of Health? Or do you want to, are you, you want to charge ahead with the, with the, with the, with the hard motion? Your, your call?
No, you can make your amendment.
Alright, that's my, that's my, the motion for my amendment.
Second.
Alright, Ms. Brascio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shay.
Softly aye.
Mr. Stivers.
A little more than softly aye.
Alright. And Mr. Healy is aye. The, the, the person who's going to have the most difficult time with this is Katie or Vanessa coming up with exactly what it was I said in terms of softening the motion. So with that amendment now, it is, it is, the amendment's been accepted. So now the motion is, is, is for the board's softer commitment to a fall town meeting for the reasons stated. Ms. Brascio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shay, soft or hard?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
And Mr. Healy is aye. Okay. I think we may be all set on the Board of Health.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Let me just finish up. Actually, we're, we're not quite done yet. Mr. Shay, I don't think I had gotten to you. Chelsea, I think you were done?
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
Alright, Brian.
And I was just going to ask Mary Lou, the question that I had may, or talked about earlier. Is this something that your board has considered? That, you know, holding off on, you know, implementing the full-time hiring until a later time and being able to continue to utilize the CARES funding? You know, certainly there's, it's undeniable that the benefit to the taxpayers of having that approach takes. If, you know, ultimately it's not just the Board of Selectment, it's not just Advisory that decides this. There's going to be hundreds and hundreds of town meeting members that show up and they're the decision makers. So that's, however, town meeting votes is how this is going to go. But if this is something that, you know, does Board of Health have an opinion on this? If you haven't, I strongly recommend that you get together and talk it through and I guess I'll ask, turn it over to you with that.
So, so Chelsea brought that up to me. It has not been, we haven't had a board meeting to discuss that issue. We're hopefully having a board meeting soon. But I wanted to get clarity on what is being proposed. Because I don't, I'm not sure I understand. You're, you're proposing to keep all positions as part-time positions and access CARES fund through December. Is that what you're proposing?
Yes, to keep the FY '21 budget intact and whatever overage you have, then use CARES.
Okay. So I can tell you that the current interim health director that we have will not stay. If the, if she doesn't have the ability to have a full-time position with benefits. She just, she won't stay. I, I think we have, we, potentially we got Advisory to agree to, to fund the balance of anything for the public health nurse through December. So that, with benefits, so that's a more feasible, like a discussion, I think we could probably have. But I, I, I just fear, right now our public health director is, is part-time. She's been working more than 40 hours. She has other 20-hour commitment. That's why she couldn't work the 40 hours. She said to me on numerous occasions, I cannot keep doing this. We don't have a public health nurse at all. So now she's doing public health nurse work and public health director work. And she's not sustainable at, at that. We have inspectors that, the inspections are only three days a week. We now, the building department is really struggling with us because we can't meet their deadlines. So they can't approve permits to get, so they're, they're, they're helping out, doing some of our Board of Health work to sort of meet their guidelines. I don't, I, I, I think you all don't comprehend how stressed our staff is right now. I know everybody's stressed. That's all I hear is everybody's stressed, but the health department is dealing with the pandemic more than anyone else right now. And it's, if we, if, if that's the proposal to go forward, I, I think, I'm almost certain we will lose our health director.
Okay. And, and let me just, again, what was voted on was for the, for the, to, to, to think about juggling the, the paying for positions with town money, but also not jeopardizing the ability to fund positions with CARES Act money, which doesn't hit the, it's the taxpayers in a very diffused way. It doesn't hit them in terms of our tax rate. But that's helpful information that, that at least from the public health director perspective, that's a position that you think you would lose the person in that position if it were not a, a full-time position as of FY '22. Fair statement?
Correct.
Alright.
Marty, can I, sorry. Go ahead, Chelsea.
You could still fund, you could fund the position to be 40 hours through CARES. It would just be through 1231 though, again, for CARES. So it's a decision as to whether you want to go to town meeting on May 22nd and potentially not get it then. Or if you, and then you're still with the 1231, or if you wait until a fall town meeting.
So you're, I, I, I guess I'm still not understanding. So her, the current interim director position ends on, on June 30th. So how would she work from July 1 till December 31st with benefits? We'd, we'd write a contract for that and that would get paid through CARES?
Yes. It'd be the same way that you're doing the nurse position.
Okay.
But it ends at 1231 then, as far as we know now.
Everything ends on 1231.
Unless CARES is extended or a stimulus act picks it up at that point.
And that ties into the, that, that's, that's why the, the commitment that, that Ms. Malinowski was asking for about a fall town meeting is important because otherwise there'd be the potential that the position would just lapse without the ability for the town to act through a special town meeting.
And we all know the reality is nothing guarantees that, I mean, a fall town meeting is an independent town meeting and an independent group of voters. And they may not vote the same way that those who get together in the spring did as well. So.
Yep. Okay.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to give flexibility and allow for the Board of Health to have the staffing that they need, but also maximize what we can get for the taxpayer. So I'm just trying to.
Oh, no, no. Makes, I, I, and, and I think, I think everybody understands that, Chelsea. I think it's a, it's a very creative idea and, and one that we'll keep exploring.
And I think that permanence here, to me, is an important aspect as well. I mean, I think we're sort of playing Russian roulette a little bit here in terms of taking a chance that it's all going to work out in the long term. At least in my mind, there's no doubt that we need this position full-time. We've got a great person doing it. And if we try to get too fancy with it, I think we risk losing a strong performer here. So I guess I'm personally not eager to take that chance, but one vote.
Okay, we're going to wrap up. Ms. Woodford, thank you very much. As I said at the beginning, we're not going to take specific votes on this. We're going to thrash through this next week, probably some other times as well. But that, next week definitely with Advisory and get their way in as well to see where we end up. But I appreciate your time and information and.
And if anybody wants, like I said, you, several of you have asked, like, well, what are we doing? What are we not doing? Regulations? I'm happy to share that. If anybody wants to reach out to me separately, I'm happy to share that information with you.
Isn't it, it's in document form?
It is.
Alright, if you could just send it to Mr. Purple and he'll get it to us. I'd like to see that.
Sure. Sure.
Alright, Ms. Woodford, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good night. Alright, thank, Chelsea, that's, that's a, that's a, I'm, I'm not sure if I'd go so far as saying Russian roulette, Sam, but there are risks, no question. But it also, there, there, there are monies available and I think it's a creative way to, to, to cushion the blow on the taxpayers. So we go, I think it's important to keep talking about that. Alright, I think we're ready to move on from our review of the department budgets on the annual.
Marty, sorry. Can I just, I just have a general comment about the budgets in general.
Okay.
I just think we're being inconsistent with the boards and committees that have minute takers versus those that don't. And, you know, some of our committee, boards and committees that have lengthy meetings don't have a minute taker and other ones that are less than an hour have a minute taker. So I, I guess I, I, I'm just looking to see if we can come up with a, you know, a, a way, maybe it's. permitting boards and financial boards that get minute takers. I just think, you know, if you have a consulting budget, then you can use it for that, but some committees are bare-bones budgets. So I just feel like we're not being consistent.
Okay, that's a fair point. All right. I know there was a question about whether or not Ms. Rosenbloom was going to be able to join us. It appears that she is. And we'll just go in order of these review of town meeting warrant articles, and the first one in order is the salary administration plan. So is Ms. Rosenbloom on her way over? She is. Hey, Betsy, how are you?
I shrunk. I'm, I'm doing okay, Marty. How are you?
First shot?
Nice to see you all. Yes, I'm a success story. I'm having side effects.
All right. Well, we will, we'll, we'll try to get you in and out quickly then.
Thank you.
All right, why don't you tell us what's going on with Article 5 in the salary administration plan this time around?
Okay, good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. So the Personnel Board completed its work on the SAP. We started in December, ended in March. The revisions have been forwarded to the Board of Selectmen's Office. I'll just take a minute to thank the Board of Selectmen's Office and Mr. Purple for loaning us, your executive assistant, Ms. Esposito, who will now translate our work into a document that will go into the warrant. As you know, if you've ever done legislative drafting, it's persnickety work. The devil's in the details, and Lori does a great job for us. So, um, I don't know what you want to know. There's a summary that I forwarded to you in the packet. My board hasn't met to prove it yet, but it's a summary of the work that we've done. So I was confident releasing it. And my plan, subject to my board's approval, would be to proceed, as I have for the last three years since I've been on the board. The full bylaw will appear in the warrant with all of the changes accepted. So what the voters see when they open the warrant is the bylaw that if they approve it, that's what it will look like for FY22. We'll also have a handout that shows full-track changes, everything that came out and everything that went in. And then another handout in final form, like what you have in the packet. For people who like the Cliff Notes edition, the section-by-section summary, which is what I gave you on Friday. So, the only other thing I think I'd like, you know, some of you have an opportunity to attend our meetings now that they're on Zoom. The bylaw is really a team effort. Vanessa, Mark, and Brian Ballantyne are, I think Brian was at all our meetings as well. Vanessa and Mark certainly were. Nothing that is in the revisions. It's all been discussed with the employees who have to deal with it from day to day. So the Personnel Board is tasked with administering and revising the bylaw, but we're cognizant that it is a team effort. Mr. Purple and Ms. Hale have to put it into effect. We don't always agree on all the wording, but everything that we've done is thoroughly vetted with them. So even if there might be a disagreement about a little bit of language, at the end of the day, we know that the employees who have to live with the SAP are comfortable with what we've done. I'll let them speak for themselves, but just wanted you to know, it's a very much a team effort. And if you've watched any of your meetings, you know that Mr. Purple, Ms. Hale, and Mr. Ballantyne are, are partners in this, so. And I'm open for any questions you may have.
All right, I think we're back to the beginning again. Ms. Brascio.
No comments, no questions. Well, I guess I'll say a comment. Just if you could share our thanks with the Personnel Board for all the work and all the discussion that you've had on this through the course of the year, Betsy, it's, it's greatly appreciated. I know you guys have put a ton of work into this, so please share our thanks.
I will. It's a great group. It's an honor to be the chair, and we've all been together for a while now. We haven't had too much turnover, so it's good when you get in a groove, and it's a great group. So thank you, and I will.
All right, Ms. Malinowski.
Betsy, no comments or questions for me, but thanks to you and your board and your collaboration with the town departments.
Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Shea.
No comments, questions from me either. Excellent work.
Betsy, I hope you're, you're laying groundwork for all of our article discussions going like this tonight.
Well, I can join a few more committees if you want, you know.
Again, I've attended a lot of the Personnel Board meetings. A great committee, doing great work, and no questions or comments, Betsy. Thanks to you and your board.
Thank you, Sam.
Yeah, Betsy, I think one of the, one of the nice things is, you know, looking for silver linings with, with this whole mess we've been in the last year is this, you know, the, the Zoom meeting library. And so even if you're not attending, you have an opportunity to, to, to check in and, and skip the commercials, which is kind of nice. And so I think all of us have, have, have followed, you know, reasonably closely the work that you all have been doing, and I guess why, that there aren't a lot of questions on the product you all put together. I think it's a nice job, and I think I will also comment that, that the Personnel Board and Mr. Purple and Ms. Hale worked famously together on getting this done.
And just, I will add, for anybody who doesn't watch our meetings, but may be watching this meeting, all of our minutes, like all the boards and committees, they're posted on the town website. If anybody sees the summary and has a question and doesn't want to listen to an entire two-and-a-half-hour meeting, we do have comprehensive minutes. You'd start in December through March, so, so, you know, four or five sets of minutes, if anybody's interested. And I do keep the minutes for Personnel Board, and I know brevity is good for something, but not in my minutes. I, I tend toward the lengthier side, so if you want to skip the two-and-a-half-hour meeting and just read the minutes, you'll see the discussion behind these, so that's always an option.
I don't know, Betsy, I think sometimes reading those minutes is longer than watching the meeting, but anyway.
In particular. Well, they serve the purpose of, Marty, I don't remember anything anymore, so I can always look back to my library. So again, if I didn't thank them enough, thanks to Mark and Vanessa and Brian, who make it all possible and slog through our meetings with us, so it really is a team effort.
All right, Betsy, have a good evening.
All right, thanks, folks. Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, we're now going to slip into, Mr. Mills has been sitting in the audience for a while, and I think we're now going to bring him over to talk about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 CPC articles, and I suspect we may be bringing over individual participants to talk about those individual articles. Mr. Mills.
Hey, everyone. How are you?
Good evening.
Good. What do you got for us?
All right, so, let's see, how do you want to do this? Because I've asked every one of the people who actually brought projects before us to be available to, if you have specific questions on them. So I, I'll tee it up by, let's see, the first two, Clanderfield and St. Mark's. We, we did no changes to those at all. We brought them, you know, because last year they got pushed. There was no changes to those articles at all. We just brought them forward exactly how they were written before. I believe Jen and Tim Davis should be on, if you have specific questions on Clanderfield. And then for St. Mark's Church, I would take a step back and not talk about that. Technically, I'm a member of the church, but Brad and Mark Wheeler should be in the audience, if you have questions on that one. And they can answer any questions on, on that project.
All right, I think we'll go, we'll, we'll do them individually, and we'll bring over for each of them to see if there are questions. Let me first ask you, though, for each of these five articles, and I, I, I've watched the meetings, I sort of know the answer, but just to sort of of, of, set the table. The, the CPC has voted to advance all of these to, for consideration at town meeting. Is that an accurate statement?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, and, and this is just from, it's from my application, I guess, but for others as well. Do you all do a, do a two-tiered approach? In other words, do you take a vote to advance it to town meeting and then do a second vote as to whether or not the, 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 the committee, in addition to advancing it to town meeting, actually supports the request? Or do you just do the former, or something different?
So we, we vote to present it and move it forward to town meeting, and recommend it to be voted on at town meeting. There's a second vote that we have to do, the actual warrant articles, because some, like the townhouse in our last meeting was when John Parent came and Jason talked one more time, because that one, if you've watched the meeting, you know that because of the bonding that we're going to do for that one, it's going to severely impact our bonding capability for up to like seven years. Because of the other bonds, we already have outstanding. So there was a lot of discussion on that, and there were some specific items that we still, the CPC wanted in the warrant article for the townhouse piece, that you know, we'll see what Town Council has to say about it.
Okay, but, but, just to maybe, maybe to, to square the circle, or does the CPC ever, or does it take, in addition to the votes you just described, take a vote saying that, you know, we, we're advancing it to town meeting, we are approving the language of the warrant article and town meeting. We, the CPC, support this and think it's, that you should act favorably on it? Or do you not take that final step as a matter of the way the committee operates?
We, we never said as a formal, you know, vote of support for each project. But I think the fact that we're putting them forth to the, you know, I've always interpreted that, you know, if we're presenting it to town meeting, we've had other applications that have come forth that, you know, didn't meet, say, historical, said, you know, that's not a historic site, and we've told the applicant, you know, sorry, this, this isn't something we can move forward. We've had people request for, say, for open space, they wanted an ATV to actually run around and help get people on town property, and like, unfortunately, that doesn't meet the criteria for using CPC funds, and we had to deny that. So there, there have been a lot that we work with people and figure out how it's going to help the town, that it meets the, the criteria for the CPC, and where it falls into each group's priority list, too. So we make sure that recreation is supportive, historic is supportive of a historic project. Same with, if affordable housing, obviously, usually the Affordable Housing Trust would come forward and ask for. And same with open space. So we, we leverage each one of the committees out there to see what, where they stand on their priorities. So I think, you know, for the most part, you know, we haven't ever said, okay, let's take a separate vote, who actually approves this. There's, there's lots of in-depth discussion to make sure that the project that we put forth meets the criteria of not only the CPC, but the need for the town.
Okay, fair enough. Before we bring on, on Colander, any questions or comments generally for Mr. Mills? No, all right. Do we have, have we brought over, you said Jen and Tim were both available? Jen or Tim, are you there?
I'm here. Good, good evening.
Can you hear me as well?
Yes. Hi, Jen, how are you?
Awesome, good. How are you?
Good, thank you. All right, so we've gotten the materials and, and, and with the, with the proposed warrant, and obviously, they're part of the packet. But I think it's probably important, if you could just give a quick thumbnail sketch of exactly what the, what their request is through the CPC from REC.
Sure. So amount-wise, the request is 238,750. That amount would allow us to rehab the field, to bring it back online. It's more or less been offline the last couple of years due to some pretty severe drainage issues down there, and water, the field holding water. More or less, the project will consist of breaking up the thatch of the field, overseeding it, so kind of aerating the field, putting some new, new seed down, cleaning out the swales that are already on-site. So over the years, from what I've been told and what I, what I've seen, there's been some significant buildup of vegetation within the swales, so we would clear out those swales, install some additional drainage, and just make sure that that field can handle, handle the rain, handle the water, address some of the runoff issue coming from the hill that's on the town property that we, we have access to, to do work on. And just, just bring it back, bring it back online. So pretty, it's, it's, it's a lot more maintenance. There's not much of a, a new build aspect of it. But just, just clean up what we have there.
Okay, and I think we, starting with Ms. Malinowski, or I mean, maybe I'll just, I wish I could, I wish I could see everybody easily and see if there are any questions by any members of the board, or any comments on the specific item. Mr. Stivers is shaking his head, no? No?
No, I, I have a question.
Ms. Malinowski.
Yeah. Hi, Tim, how are you?
How are you?
Good. So it was the same number as last year, correct? So are you confident that this number is still accurate?
Yeah, and I actually had a conversation with our architect as well, for him to take a look at it with trends, and he's confident as well that this should be fine.
Okay, and is your plan, if it passes a town meeting, to go out to bid on July 1st on this one? Or what's, kind of what's the timing for this project?
Yeah, I mean, we'll move on as soon as we can. We are in talks with Conservation, just with some stormwater stuff that we may need to, just permits that we may need to take care of. So we'll wait to see if this passes. We'll take care of that, and then we'll put it out as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Brascio, anything?
I did, but Ms. Malinowski asked my question, so I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to tease that out a little bit, Tim, so, so the timetable, not just for getting it going, but getting it done, what do you think is, assuming that, that everything goes smoothly, when do you think the work would get done? Again, assuming it's signed off on by town meeting, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, ideal situation, we'll, we'll get it out to bid in the summer. We'll probably get a bill, again, ideal. Get the bill done in the fall, let it rest, and then hopefully it'll be open in the spring for some limited play on it. So, spring 2022, and the next fiscal.
Okay, terrific. Jen, anything you want to add in?
Maybe the only thing I'd add is to, to remind the, the board that at the last special town meeting was when we went through the process of getting funding to kind of go through this three-step process with you guys to confirm that, like, it's feasible, it's possible, we can do this, we can stay within our footprint. And we went through that process with the board and got through all those checkpoints, and that's why we feel like really, really confident in this plan and moving this project forward, that it's feasible and doable, and after the multiple town meetings and discussions with all the boards on this, I really feel confident that, like, we can bring this back online, and we've dotted every I and crossed every T possible for this one, so.
All right, no, terrific, that's, that's some important context. Thanks for that. All right, again, for the articles as well, we're not going to be taking votes tonight. We've got some additional work that, that is part of our due diligence, but I think generally, you're sensing that, that there's, there aren't obje, there's not objection to the, to the proposal by the board.
Right.
All right, but we haven't taken a vote yet. All right, thanks very much. Go enjoy your evenings.
All right, thanks, guys.
All right, thanks, good to see you.
All right, good to see you, Tim. Bye-bye, Jen. And next up, Andrew, you said a couple of people, I see Mr. Blanchett with St. Mark's Church next to him. I'm assuming he'll be coming over. Is there someone else as well?
Should be Mark Wheeler, I think.
Oh, yeah, no, I see Mark's name, sure. Okay, Mark, yep. Hello, Brad, how are you?
Brad, you're on mute?
You're on mute, Brad. You're still on mute.
There we go, good. I'm doing very well tonight. How's everybody doing?
Well, thanks. And hello, Mark, how are you?
Very good, thank you for having us.
Sure thing. Same thing I said to Tim, just a, you know, we've seen the materials that were, and most of us have had the opportunity to see some or all of the discussions at the the CPC meetings, but if you could give, for our sake and for the sake of folks watching, you know, a thumbnail sketch of, of what it is you're proposing and asking for through the CPC.
Sure. Brad, you want to go ahead with that, since you, you wrote the, the, the request?
Yeah, sure. So just taking a step back, the St. Mark's Tower was built in 1891. Yeah, sure. So just taking a step back, the St. Mark's Tower was built in 1891, is a freestanding building away from the church. And it has been the de facto clock tower or telling time for especially historic downtown South Row since 1891. And it's 130 years old now. And it's just seen a lot of wear and tear. And it is in dire need of a lot of repairs. We have worked with Spencer Boat Sullivan, the same group that's working with the Southborough Library on what needs to be done. And there is $750,000 worth of repairs that need to be done with the tower. And one of the things, so we're asking for 350,000, so 40% of the overall cost, we have raised.
I'll correct you, Brad. So we're, we're asking for 300.
Oh, 300. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And we've, we've done phase one of the work already with, facilitated with funding from both parishioners and from the Massachusetts Historic Commission.
Yep. In that phase two, I mean, you've probably seen the scaffolding up there a couple of years ago. And what that did was really fix the roof. So no more moisture perspiration coming inside the tower. Unfortunately, the, over the years, the moisture and everything that's inside there now, there are buttresses coming out, there are rocks and stones that need to be rehabilitated. And, and so one of the things that we, that Ms. Gillespie, when she was on CPC, recommended is go to our parishioners. And we have raised, Mark, what's the exact amount?
We have 352,000 raised from parishioners.
And, and so what we're asking for from the town is the 300,000. The additional, as, as you can see, as you can tell, it doesn't line up with 750, but we're working with Mass Historical Commission. We got 50,000 from them. We sent in an application as well. And one of the things, a lot of the feedback that we've gotten, just working with the Board of Select Board, CPC Historical Commission is just to make it abundantly clear that there is no religious symbolism on the tower. It is freestanding. It is part of the historic district of downtown Southborough. I'm, I'm drawing a blank, Mark, but what else would you like to add?
I would just add that I know we've forwarded some documents to you that were essentially responses to questions and, and the results of some research that we conducted that was asked of us by the advisory committee to understand, you know, what other, had any other towns that had issued CPA funds to, to congregations, had they been litigated? So we did some of that, that research and we came back, we, of 10 congregations that we, we spoke with, none of them said that they had in any way been threatened with litigation or had litigation filed for them. So the whole issue around this Kaplan Acton case, which was very, very much in the forefront of everyone's minds, fresh on the ruling that had taken place in, in March of 2018. Now, three years later, there's a lot more perspective on that. So I, I think just as a, as a statistic that you can, that you can use, that there's been at least 60 active congregations that have been approved for $9.6 billion in CPA funding from Massachusetts cities and towns since the Kaplan case. So everyone is completely aware of the need to, to adhere to the, to the guidelines that were set forth. And you have the, the letter, the opinion letter from Mr. Aldo Cipriano relating to his assessment indicating that if any such lawsuit were brought forth, it would be completely defensible. So I hope that gives you some perspective.
All right. I'm going to go, Mr. Shay, I'm going to go, you first and a second, but just my, my recollection is that in addition to what you just described, and I remember the, whatever it was, the 2016 case or something like that. And, and you know, the, the sort of, you know, florid language in the letter that was sent by whoever it was, looking to cause trouble. But my recollection is that you also have gotten, in other words, there's an additional sort of punctuation here. Mass Historical has acted, have they actually given you all money?
Yes. Yeah. In fact, they contributed $50,000 grant that we applied to the Phase One project. And this also resulted in the establishment of a historic preservation agreement, which requires us to maintain the archaeological, the archaeological, they actually use the word archaeological, historical and architectural appearance of, of the church structure.
So, so, so the, the, the state's historical commission has, has at least implicitly weighed in that there aren't any church-state issues with, if, if the town, for instance, chooses to go forward with.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, they've, Kaplan versus Acton unfortunately didn't give us a, a clear-cut answer, but basically to summarize it, meaning that you can't take state or town money to forward a religious purpose. So no stained glass windows, no new pews, things like that. It's really the outer envelope of a building. And we're not asking for any, any funds for our, our church. It is strictly for the tower. And to, to go back to what you were saying, Mr. Chair, the, because I think some people will ask, well, why can't you just get more money from the state? The state only has about 800, $850,000 earmarked for these projects. And we just got a letter the other day, they received 35 applications totaling $2.175 million. So there really is a certain cap on what we can receive from the state. And we were fortunate enough to receive an emergency fund, at least to stop penetration of, of snow and, and rain and things like that into the tower.
All right. Mr. Shay?
Thank you. And thank you both for coming tonight. So I guess the comment that I'll make, I think applies equally to all of the five CPC articles. It's not targeted at any one. I think it's something, it's something that everybody is going to have to make a consideration of this year. And perhaps one of the unintended consequences of pushing some of the articles from last year to this year, while the right decision at the time and a defensible decision, there's now other CPC projects that are popping up as well. And I think we're, you know, we just need to remember with CPC, that all started, and for the first four years of the program, the state lived up to its commitment to, to us as a community when we adopted CPC and matched 100% of the funds that the town generated. Since that time, the percent match has been all over the place. And it's gone from like a low of 20% to a high of 67.5. I haven't done an exact average, but you know, low to mid twenties is where that match has settled in compared to the 100% that was committed when, when we signed up for the program. Meaning that, you know, a lot of the money that's in the CPC account is more Southborough tax money. And it's a limited amount. And I think everybody just needs to prioritize, you know, where, and you know, and I haven't, you know, done a look, a check to see where, you know, the full CPC account stands in light of all the asks that we do have for each of the five projects. But I think, you know, for this year, certainly the, I think the five CPC articles may come under, you know, more scrutiny perhaps than they had in the past. So, and I'll just, I, I'll just leave it with that.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Mr. Stivers?
Yes, thank you. And thanks for, to Brad and Mark for coming in and sending the additional material. That was very helpful to get some additional context on it. One quick response to Mr. Shay's comment, I agree that we need to be conscious of the longer-term funding issues. I also think that by and large, these are excellent projects that come through the CPC process. And I'd remind people, we're actually at the low end in terms of the CPC rate that we voted a number of years ago. So we have an option actually of increasing that a little bit, should we choose to find more funding for this particular source. So not popular in terms of raising taxes, but again, it's an interesting source for what I think are a lot of good projects. Relative to this particular one, I'm interested in, Marty mentioned the letter, the complaint letter we got. And the background material suggested that town council, and I think an attorney for the church maybe responded to that letter. Is there any additional feedback from that response? Did we hear back from that individual?
That would be a question to ask your town council or other people that would have been privy to that. I'm, but I'm not personally aware of anything that then precipitated from a response that our, our diocesan legal counsel have provided working with your, with Southborough's town council.
And town council's letter also referred to some additional work that needed to be done in the preservation restriction there. Has that been completed or is there still activity to be addressed there? Is that path clear for that or still a question mark about it?
So no one has approached us to discuss an alteration to the preservation restriction, but, you know, we would certainly entertain the, the review and, and go through the process to have it altered. It would not be unusual to request an alteration. It's something that other towns do when the Massachusetts Historic Commission creates their restriction. It's not unusual for a town to then also place or ask for additional or alterations to the restriction. So certainly we would, we would be open to it.
Again, I don't know the details. I read that in Mr. Cipriano's letter that you forwarded, like there was some uncertainty about that that needed to be resolved. So I'm sure.
Yeah. I'm, I'm trying to think when Mr. Cipriano sent that. I think we're in the process of go, working with Mass Historical Commission on a preservation restriction. And so we have a full-fledged preservation restriction owned by the state. Ms. Gillespie was, she was talking to the CPC members as well, that the state owns it, that it's kind of makes the town of Southborough's life a little bit easier owning that, but it's, it's signed, sealed, delivered. But like Mark said too, if towns want to amend that, we're, we're certainly more than open to it. It's just.
Again, all I was looking for was some response to say, yep, we've done whatever needs to be done on that. It's all wrapped up. As opposed to having some complex project out there that needs to be addressed in terms.
It should be all set to go. Yeah. The preservation restriction with the board as well.
Okay, thank you. And my final question relates to liability here. And I, I hate to make too fine a point on it, but town council's comment that the lawsuit is defensible doesn't necessarily mean that it's no cost and that anybody can sue anybody for anything these days. And I think that there is a fair amount of confidence as I read, read the material and looked at the background material, that the risk is fairly low. I was interested that advisory apparently asked if the church would identify the town against legal costs that might arise out of this. And, and the answer was no. And I'm not, not an attorney, not in a position to judge how likely it is that somebody would come up with some sort of lawsuit. I'm thinking that we're probably pretty low on the, on the target list there, given all the other towns out there that have done this. Marty, do you have any sense of what our litigation risk might be here? Is that something that you think is pretty low also or?
Well, I mean, the risk that somebody could file something versus the risk that whatever is filed is, is, you know, got some significant merit. It's interesting that other towns have acted and, and they've been fine. Really, the telling blow for me is the fact that the state has already funded. And, you know, they presumably go through a pretty rigorous vetting process to determine that in fact, there aren't any, any church-state separation issues. You know, my personal view is, is that this would be a stretch for someone to claim that, that there was, you know, church-state intersection here. But you know, the risk that, that somebody out there wants to file a lawsuit. We've seen that that can happen.
As we've seen, yes.
I might, I might add some commentary to the Massachusetts Historic Commission. We did research on the grants that they had distributed since the Kaplan case. And we calculated there were 13 different religious organizations in nine different cities and towns that had received grants from the Massachusetts Historic Commission. So it's not just St. Mark's that had received it. It's, you know,
Yes.
Twelve other, twelve other.
What I would, what I would, and I think this is maybe where Mrs. Stivers was, was, was heading on this. I would make sure that my i's were dotted and my t's were crossed because, you know, it's an issue that was raised, not just by, by the, the non-Southborough resident who sent the letter, but there were some Southborough residents who had some, some concern. And I, I expect that may be raised again at town meeting. So I, I would have my, as I said, my i's dotted and t's crossed. So there isn't any, any uncertainty about exactly who has said what. You know, what the potential legal landscape looks like, including possibly going back to Aldo. If, if, if based on some questions, for instance, that Sam just asked, there's not sufficient clarity on those issues. Are you all set, Sam?
Yeah, that, that's helpful. Thank you. I, I agree. The risk is pretty low and particularly have the state to stand behind. They've got to be able to take some comfort in that as well. So thank you.
All right. Ms. Brash here.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for coming. I have no comments or questions other than to thank you for forwarding the information and doing the research that you did. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Malinowski?
I'm Mark and Brian, Mark and Brad. Sorry. Thank you for coming. Just one question. What would happen to the tower if this was not funded by CPC?
So we would be certainly continuing to use the parishioner-funded amount to, to apply to the restoration. It would, it would likely lead to a rescoping of the restoration effort, which would, of course, result in a future restoration project in a, in a much sooner period of time. That's, that's honestly what would happen.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Marty, Marty, quick, can I just say something in response to what Mr. Shay was saying?
Sure.
So Brian, you were saying the, the state match was kind of all over the place. Just, just to be clear, we get the percent that we are owed from the state regardless. That fluctuation has to do with new towns that have taken on the CPC and the, the percent match that is then dispersed has been diminished because a lot more towns have been in it, not because, you know, we're not getting our fair share. We're getting our fair share. And in terms of the amount of funds that we have to fund the projects before us, we have, we've gone through this with Brian and Carla and many times, we have all the funds to fund all the projects before us and that we put to town meeting. So if there's concerns about future projects, that was asked at advisory last week as well. You know, we, we've reached out numerous times to all the committees, all the boards, saying, hey, what other things you have coming so we can plan on it, things like that. No one has given us any other things than what's before us today that we are concerned about and saying we, we need to hold back funds for. I mean, obviously if there's, there's plenty of funds for, or there, there are significant funds still set aside in the bucket for affordable housing. But in terms of historical, open space and recreation, the projects before us are the ones that everyone says are the key ones that they, that should get done for the town. So I just want to be clear on that for all the projects that are out there. Thanks.
All right, Andrew. Thanks. All right, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
All right. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Our next item, Lisa, I am going to have to, you know, the unfortunate thing about this article is that the word bonding appears in the article. And I, I've touched base, I mean, you know, it doesn't, it, it, I think I'm ultimately going to get clearance from our ethics office down in DC to be able to participate in the, in the discussion because it doesn't involve a particular bonding firm and, and, you know, a particular bonding transaction. It's whether or not to, to, to proceed to that next step, but I haven't gotten that clearance yet. So since I, I, I value my law license, I have, until I get that, I'm not going to participate in the, in the discussion. I'm going to turn it over to our, to our vice chair.
Great. Thanks, Marty. So Andrew is John Parent, I believe. I don't necessarily see Jason at this point, but if we could bring John over.
Yeah. So and I assume everyone's familiar with this project. It's for the townhouse. Basically, from the roof down to the exteriors, the gutters, repointing of the stonework, replacing some of the limestone stones or rehabbing them, doing some of the culverts where the drain goes and the front door of the building. So basically, an entire oh, and also the windows. So we're talking about a rehabilitation exterior facade of the townhouse. And you know, it it's a pretty penny. We're we're talking 2.23 You know, there was a lot of discussion about this at the CPC about, you know, we're we're having, we're at this point because of deferred maintenance on the building. And, you know, again, John, nothing against you because you weren't there when all this was happening over the hundreds of years. But in the point I made at the advisory, I want to make very clear, too, if we do this because, like Mr. Healy was saying, we're talking about bonding, we are going to use up all our bonding on the CPC side because it's such an expensive project. And it makes sense to do the whole thing in one fell swoop from, you know, instead of staging it and having to put up the the staging multiple times, it is a better deal. John's already broken all that out and everything. But it's gonna, it will handcuff, I'll use that word, for the CPC from a bonding capacity for if another big project comes up, we wouldn't be able to bond, say, another million dollars for about seven years when we looked at the bonding capacity. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Parent and let him fill you in on what the request is.
Actually, thank you, Andrew. Actually, I think Mr. Malinowski is here as well. If we could bring him over. All right, welcome, Jason. You're on mute.
Hi there.
Hi. Would you? I know John's here as well. Would you like to speak to this?
It's up to John. I wasn't intending to speak.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure which one of you was going to, so.
Well, put it this way, I'll start off, Jason can jump in. Earlier last year, with the help of Jason and the Capitol Planning Committee, we and actually the backing of the Board of Selectmen, we hired the engineering firm and the architectural firm of Spencer Sullivan and Vought. And we worked with Lynn Spencer, who is an architectural historic preservationist. She is currently working on the Southborough Library, and she's also working on St. Mark's Church. And what we did is a building envelope study of the town hall. Town Hall is a 150-year-old building. It has seen its better days, as many of you know. Anyone who's been in the building knows it's got beautiful bones and it's a gorgeous structure. But unfortunately, that structure has, for lack of a better term, been neglected. I don't think any of my predecessors intended to neglect it. I think we have all seen what happens with budgetary constraints over the years. Things get pushed down the road, and generally buildings end up being one of those things. Well, through the building envelope study, we learned of the deficiencies in the building. These include the roof structure, which, you know, has reached the end of its useful life, the masonry, which needs to be repointed. But in order to do it properly, you want to repoint this in a historic fashion. When you repoint on a house, if you have something failing, you just tuck and point in a little bit of mortar, and it looks good enough and you're good to go. Well, you're talking about a historic building. You need to do analysis on the mortar. You need to match the mortar. You want the same kind, same appearance. That leads us to the window structure. What we want to do with the window structure in order to get functional windows is replace just the sashes. We want to preserve all the original molding architecture. So we have the original appearance when we're done with functional windows. We literally have are still in the midst, actually, of the worst pandemic arguably in the history of our nation. And we have a town hall where windows don't open. So we're working with an HVAC system and replacing filters quite often. One of the goals is to get our windows functioning in town hall for comfort of employees, for health and safety, and just for betterment of the building. We're also looking at preserving the moldings around the building, fixing failing cornices and the molding itself, repainting in historic colors, and also the sandstone. Due to the age and the beginning of failings on the copper downspouts, we're getting some water runoff on the sandstone over the years, which is deteriorating in its spots. The goal is to repair, preserve, and bring this back to its original appearance as well. Needless to say, it is arguably the most historic building in the town of Southborough. Yes, you may look at other buildings such as the Garfield House and say, wow, that's the best-looking building. But the town hall, I would say, is the most historic building. It is a building that serves a purpose for every single resident in the town. It is a building there. If we do this project, everyone benefits. And this is why I went to CPC. I went to them because I believe the way we need to do it is in a true historic fashion. By reaching out with them and hiring true architectural preservationists, we are going to ensure that our finished product is something we can all be proud of. It is done properly and will be long-lasting. And basically, in a nutshell, that's what we're looking to do, to bring the townhouse back to the way it should look. And in a functional sense, it should be.
Great. Thank you, John. Jason, do you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I'm happy to just take questions from the board as they come up. I think Capitol Plan has been in front of you enough this year and has mentioned this project, so I'll wait for any questions.
Okay, great. Mr. Shea, do you have any questions you'd like to add? I know we've discussed it here at the Board of Selectmen as well, but
No additional questions from me at this point.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Sam?
Thanks, Lisa, and thanks, John and Jason. I followed this at the various committee meetings and over the years even. I think this is overdue. I think it's something we need to do. I have any questions at this point. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Malinowski.
No further questions. Thank you.
Okay, I have none. Obviously, I I've had a voice on the Capitol Committee on bringing this forward, and and I I think it's a a good use of of preserving what we have here in town. We've talked a lot about it. So again, thank you both for coming and we'll see you soon.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Jason.
And Marty, I turn it back over to you.
He said, we should have you do all of these.
The easy ones.
That was short and sweet. I'll see if I can duplicate it. Next up, the flag school assessment, which is the 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 smallest of the requests. Andrew, you want to touch base about it? And then I'm assuming maybe somebody from the Historical Society, maybe I see
I think Michael Weisman should be out there.
Yeah, I see Rebecca and Michael. I'm not sure which are which are both.
Definitely Michael, maybe Rebecca, if she raises her hand. But basically, you know, to to kick this off, as Michael gets in, it's basically they're looking to do an assessment to see the original to do to figure out the original paint color, the original historic features of the the flag school. And it's budgeted for just under $10,000, $9,950. And in terms of, you know, then future work to be done, I mean, Michael probably talked to us, but they're looking they think they can fund this through grants and other fundraisers outside. They they don't anticipate coming to the town necessarily, but you know, we'll see what happens.
So it's a possibility. That was going to be one of my questions.
There's a possibility. I mean, originally, they were they were going to say that in the article, they wanted to say that they wouldn't come back to the town. But, you know, you never know what happens, and the CPC actually talked them out of putting that in the article. You know, you don't want to once you start doing something, you want to do it right. So
Well, I don't think we have to worry about about what might happen down the line, but let's talk about this specific item, which is relatively modest. Mr. Wei Shan.
Michael, are you muted?
No, you're you're muted, Michael. Yep, still muted.
Rebecca has her hand raised, so maybe she can come in.
All right. All right. Rebecca, you're muted as well. Oh.
Hi.
Yeah, and I just saw you note that that Michael is not here, so
I know, I know.
But not in any communicating way, so
No, he wasn't. He wasn't able to get out or something, he said, but he has something to take care of.
I mean, this is pretty modest. Can you just give us a quick recap?
Yeah, so Flag School Building, as you all know, houses the Southborough Historical Museum and Archives. It's come a long way since a few years ago, which, thanks to CPC funding, we were able to stabilize the collection, get rid of mold, mitigate mold from the flooding, and, you know, get everything in a stable condition. And now we're looking at the building itself, which has a lot of deferred maintenance, like many of the other buildings you discussed. Windows, the paint. And before we start undertaking that work, we thought it would be best to have a review again, from Spencer and Sullivan, the same architectural preservation firm, working on all the other town buildings. And they have suggested a full site review and assessment, which would cost $9,950 to do a full review of the building, talk about external paint analysis, prioritize treatment and phased plan, and cost estimates by phase and priority. And the idea is the long-term preservation of this building, which is eligible for the National Historic Register, is one of only two of the original schoolhouses in town. The other one is a private home. It's it's a sweet little building in the heart of downtown. And we just want to make sure that when we begin working on it, that we do it in a in a well-thought-through fashion. You know, measure twice and cut once kind of thing. The paint on the exterior, for example, I believe was latex painted over oil. So the paint analysis will take all of that down, find out what the original colors maybe should have been, and make some other details and make the building weather tight as well.
Good. It's a cool building. It'll show you how how both how old I am and what my little hometown was like, but there were I went to school in buildings that looked like that. So how about you, Sam?
Wow.
Let's do intense.
All right, this perfectly reasonable request. Instead of going around individually, are there any questions about it from any members of the board? I I don't think so.
Just one, Marty, if I may.
Yeah, sure, Lisa.
So and I should know, Rebecca, I should know the answer to this, and I apologize, but how old is the building?
It's 162 years old.
Okay, I knew it was really old. I just wasn't sure how old. So thank you again.
1859.
1859. Okay, that shows the importance. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, great explanation. I tried to follow Lisa's lead, not quite as good, but Rebecca, thank you very much. And have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Bye, thanks. Bye, Andrew.
And our final CPC article, it's it's an interesting collection of articles this year, I will tell you that.
Yes.
I I love this one, and I love the discussion with advisory the other night about the the fence.
So is Catherine on? She
I saw her in the audience earlier. Yeah, she's there.
Okay, bringing her in. She can explain it the best. Catherine is the head of the Trails Committee. But basically, this is, this project is to connect the last major piece of the Borough's Trails Loop together, which is a would be a big accomplishment, but I'll let Catherine describe the project. She does a much better job than I do.
Yeah, and Catherine, you don't have to go into just a thumbnail sketch because the materials you provided to us were were so thorough and so detailed. I could give a pretty good presentation about this project right now. So just a thumbnail sketch so that, you know, to remind us, and so folks watching will have a a good idea. And then I suspect there might be some a couple of questions here and there.
Sure, happy to. But I would like to, I promise you, I do not have a presentation, but I do have a slide to show up the trail map. Because we're talking about it. It's easier for people who are listening. Can I show my thing?
Can you make it so that she can present it?
Yeah, Vanessa will have to do that. She's the host.
Thank you.
And that's not the only reason Vanessa will have to do that. If I tried to, we'd be here for a long time.
Okay, great. So let me know when you see the the map and some fabulous pictures.
We see it.
All set.
Okay, great. So the the quick, we've been, we've talked about this before, so most of you are familiar with this trail is about 1.6 miles long. It's on VCR land. We, Southborough committed to finishing this section of trail back in 2012 and 2013, when the feasibility study was put together by Marlboro and the surrounding communities. So we're just fulfilling our commitments in that way, and the funding for the application for the $7,011 will help help pay for signage and for fencing. The fencing is important because it's going to help protect the infrastructure that's maintaining the the water infrastructure, and so it's for security. There's specific specs that we have to follow, so it makes drives up the cost a little bit, as well as the prevailing wages that brings the cost a little bit higher using public funds. So as you know, trails are great, and I think probably most of you have had an opportunity to enjoy some of Southborough trails during the pandemic, so we we understand the value that it brings to our town. And so we're hoping to to finish this trail up, and we would be using the funds to as matching funds for an upcoming grant to help fund the rest of the project. So we would leverage this this money and get, you know, a return on investment for the town. It could be up to five times, but I don't expect the additional pieces to be that much, so I don't want to overstate that. But again, like Andrew was saying, it connects the Borough's Loop. If it is the largest remaining gap for the Borough's Loop, which is 33 miles in the surrounding area, it's also part of the Aqueduct Trail and also intersects with the Bay Circuit Trail, which is over here. So I'll stop there and let you ask the hard questions.
I'm not sure if they're hard questions, but 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 what I'll, in fact, maybe Mr. Styvers, I'll go to you because the the largest part of the expense of of the forty-seven thousand dollars is for a pretty elaborate fence around what looks like a bunker. And Sam, I thought you gave a very good explanation about why, because again, advisory had a number of pointed questions about about how could a fence cost this much? That's, I don't know, 16 feet by 18 feet or something like that. And I thought your MWRA experience gave a pretty good answer to that, so maybe you could repeat that for all of us?
Sure, I'm happy to comment. This is an access shaft to water supply infrastructure that MWRA is extraordinarily careful about protecting. And there are other security access controls as part of this structure. But now that citizens can be walking down the trail beside this, it could be viewed as a constructive nuisance or whatever they call it to for people to explore a little bit. And so
An attractive nuisance.
Okay, sorry. The the desire, I I was a little surprised that they didn't want to, you know, a 12-foot high fence with barbed wire and razor wire on it. But to me, it's a pretty good trade-off because MWRA has is a policy become much more supportive of providing access to their properties for recreational purposes, hike trails and so forth. And so this, for me at least, is a great deal. We spend a little bit of money but get access to a critical trail piece that opens up a sizable recreational asset for residents. So I think it makes a lot of sense, and I fully understand why they want the fence, and I certainly support the request.
Brian, Chelsea, or Lisa, are you going to have any questions about this? Yeah, Lisa does, and Brian does. All right, well, let's start with Lisa.
Great, thank you. And and thank you so much, Catherine. You guys have done so much work on this, and as Marty said, that's a pretty impressive package you put together. I just have a more of a liability question. So once the fence goes up, who will own the fence? Will the town still own the fence? And if the fence is damaged, say, for whatever reason, who's liable or where does liability lie on fixing the fence?
Yes, good question. So the Trails Committee in Town of Southborough would be responsible for the maintenance of the fence. And as far as liability, we have confirmed with the insurance company, thanks to Mr. Purple, that as long as there's a sign that says no trespassing and no climbing, the town is fully covered with their current insurance policy.
Wow, that was a lot easier to answer than I thought. Thank you very much. I'm all set.
We try to think everything.
Yeah, they practice.
I didn't know, Chelsea, I didn't know if you had your hand up. Did you have anything?
No, just thank you, Catherine. This is, I appreciate your enthusiasm as well.
All right, Brian?
One thing that I would just point out, that it's not as though Southborough is being held to a higher or a different standard as well with this fence requirement. The MWRA has a number of walking trails around a number of their other facilities, other locations. Actually, one of the nicer places to walk is around Boston Harbor. And if you walk the perimeter of Deer Island, where the MWRA's wastewater treatment plant is, it's a beautiful walkway, again, on the outside of a significant security fence to keep people outside of the treatment plant itself. For those actually who make the walk of our trails into Marlboro, you'll see similar fencing that the MWRA has, protecting the Carroll Water Treatment Plant just in Marlboro as well. And I have a nice trail system, again, with fencing around Nut Island and Quincy. So it's, you know, I think it's a good cooperative effort between the two, but certainly understandable why that agency needs to maintain the security requirements for the infrastructure that they have.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Brian. Catherine, I think you, not quite as enthusiastic as you, but I think you sense that there is enthusiasm for this among the board. It just seems like, again, I'm not sure if I know too many people in Southborough who haven't taken advantage of the Trails. It's such a, it's such a great system you all have put together, maintained, et cetera. And so thanks for that as well. And I think we are done. Mr. Mills, I think we're going to be able to let you go as well.
No, I think I gotta stick around for the planning board.
Sorry about that. Catherine, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Catherine, thank you. Great job.
Yeah, appreciate that. Take care.
All right. Article 36, outdoor illumination. And I saw Ms. Houlihan, so I think we should bring, and I'll wait till she comes over and see if, who else.
You can probably put me, take me out of the, I don't have, I'm not gonna present or anything, but I'm gonna stick around.
Okay. All right, I think we can take Mr. Mills out of the grid. Marty, how are you, Marty?
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. Um, there's also Destin Hillman and Sarah Hecker that might be in the audience that are, are part of this kind of mini writing team.
Okay, well, then let's bring them over. Mr. Heilmann, am I saying that right? Okay.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Doctor.
Doesn't say doctor there.
Sorry.
Okay.
Um, so thank you. So the lighting bylaw has had minor edits since the last year, when, where the writing team comprised of myself, Destin, and Sarah. And so I'd ask them, I'd welcome them to chime in and answer questions as they come about. But let me just say a couple of things. The bylaw posted for today, the draft 31821, shows the track changes from the existing language to the new language. The areas that are highlighted in bold text are the insertions. The planning board will submit a clean version for publication of the warrant article after our planning board meeting on April 12. We've had a continuation of public hearings on this, and there will be, there will be subsequent changes to the document here. I think the challenge is, is the mini writing team has been drinking from the work fire hose, and it's been challenging to find time to make such amendments. The planning board will provide voters' handouts that will show both the track changes, very similar to the personnel board and what Betsy went through, so that they can see the transparency of what's changed from the current bylaw to what is proposed in the new drafted language. So I have a few proactive comments about the biting, but, excuse me, the lighting bylaw. So my first comment is, based on advice from Town Council, we amended language to more clearly state that the lighting bylaw is applicable to, quote, "single and two-family residential lots." There's a discrepancy with the, the building inspector and Town Council, and we thought it was very important to actually include this. This is not a change from the previous lighting bylaw. It's just clarity of language, so people understand that a bylaw is actually applicable to the residents, as well as the, the people that own other properties, which is industrial and commercial lots. The second comment is, we have included a new Section C enforcement, which will subsequently strike the first sentence, which I'll read. It states currently, "The owner of any lot or property on which luminaires, excuse me, subject to this bylaw is located or proposed to be located, shall have the burden of demonstrating that the existing or proposed luminaire complies with the standards established by this bylaw." So just want to be clear, that is going to be stricken. We had a conversation on the planning board that it would be really unjust to put the defense on the property owner, and it really would be important to put it on the person that's filing a complaint. So we will retain the second sentence, which states that, quote, "Violations of this bylaw shall be subject to the provisions of the Town of Southborough Articles Sub six, entitled Administration, Section 174-24, thereof entitled Enforcement Procedures Violations and Penalties." So all this enforcement does is it points to another part in the bylaw of where enforcement happens in zoning. So again, this claimant, not the property owner, would be responsible for submitting proof of violation. That language would be included in the Rules and Regulations, which is an accompanying document of the bylaw. The Rules and Regulations is simply that and not part of the written bylaw, because what we've learned in lighting is, because of technology and evolution of progression, terminology changes, the way that light is measured is, has changed. And so it's important that the bylaw of what the foundational premise of lighting is included in the bylaw, but the Rules and Regulations would be specific around the technical aspects of the terminology and the technology used at that time. So to that point, we have included new terminology and definitions reflective of the technological progression in lighting. For example, we have updated terms such as foot candles to reflect how the lighting industry has changed and evolved to luminaires. So that's all my comments, and then I'll open it up to you if you have any questions for our team.
You know, I'm gonna ask a couple, Marty, and then I may have some more afterwards. One of the things, and this is my standard operating procedure, is I did, you know, sort of an ad hoc survey, taking a look at, at the way other towns approached this. And I guess two things. Number one, I didn't see any language like you had at the beginning of the enforcement provision, so I'm glad you're taking that out. That, that burden shift would have been, I think, really problematic. A number of the other communities I saw that had illumination bylaws, and maybe the, maybe the regs you're talking about would address this, but they laid out what the process was for a complaint. Who it went to, what the complaint had to be in. There really wasn't anything about standing, who had standing to make a complaint, although that's a, I know there's been discussions at the planning board about, can anybody just drive around Southborough and file complaints against, you know, a bunch of different people? I'm not particularly worried about that, but there doesn't seem to be a clear process. And for instance, if, if, if I think that, that there's a, and lighting that violates the bylaw, well, I guess I'll ask you, what, what do you foresee happens? I'm a neighbor, across the street, whatever, and I think there's an issue with illumination. What do you foresee the step being that is taken by the complainant?
So this, this, your, your point is actually well-taken, Marty, because this has actually happened in town, and I think we, there, there wasn't, there wasn't really any clarity in process. So we, the, the writing committee, which would include Destin, Sarah, and I, I think, have to convene on exactly what that process is. I think we have clarity. Destin's provided some very helpful language that could help a layperson kind of do an assessment on whether or not they're, they're being infringed upon because of the lighting violation. So I, you know, I guess it would be premature for me to say exactly what the process is, but we know that that process has to be written out. And so our plan is to kind of present that at the next planning board, which is the next week, next Monday.
Okay, a couple of other things to think about, in addition to, to the complaining process, then, then the next step. I complain. I say there's been a, a, that some illumination is in violation. Again, I think it's, it's wise to take out the, the burden of proof that was in there, but how does that violation then gets, that, then get resolved? Who has the authority to do that? Who has the, how do you collect evidence of that, of the alleged violation? And is that something that, that is also part of what you're describing that's going to be addressed?
Yeah, so first of all, I think the collection, Sarah, and then I'll let you go, the collection of evidence would be something that we define. So that's exactly accurate, and that's kind of premature for me to say exactly what that is. But in what we are maintaining is that enforcement in Section 17424 is the building inspector, or the, is the enforcement of zoning bylaw in our town. And so we are instructing that that person, whoever holds that job, is required to enforce that.
Okay. I look forward to seeing the enforcement language. As, I think you might be gathering that that's something I'm going to pay a lot of attention to. And I guess, and maybe Mark, this is a question for you, and maybe follow up down the line. Do we have a sense for what sort of capacity and/or burden there is likely to be for the building department for this? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, Marty, this is, this is, this is not just for going-forward projects. In other words, this is a bylaw that would apply to, in other words, to everybody right now. In other words.
It does.
Right.
It, it, there's no difference on who it applies to. There's a difference of opinion of who should enforce it. But I raised that with this, this Gordislawman earlier, and there, there was, unfortunately, there was no action from that. And so I think what we did is provide clarity to that. There is nothing in this bylaw that changes. It's everything that's there, the, the difference is really in the technical terms of what we're imposing and the request to go and, and advise by the Dark Skies Commission around blue light. And so, yes, there is some perspective around the strength of LED and luminaire brightness. But there is, there's really nothing, and I point to Sarah and Destin, there's nothing different that hadn't applied to my neighbor today, or me, that's any different in this moving forward.
No, but the difference is, and this is why I asked about, I referenced Mark and the, and the building department. The difference is, and you're right, there was a dispute about exactly what the language required in the, in the bylaw. Here, what you are, not necessarily in the bylaw, but in the regs you're talking about, you're going to make clear that the responsibility falls with the building inspector, who, under the previous bylaw, said, "I don't have this responsibility." So there is additional responsibility that's being visited on a department, and that's the.
There isn't additional.
I'm sorry?
Like, I want to be very clear, there isn't any additional responsibility. The person in the role today believes it's not their responsibility, but in the bylaw, it is, it is subject to single and dub and two-family dwellings. There's nothing different. And Aldo has opined on that. So I just think it's the person in the role who believes that this would be new.
Okay. All right. I'm trying to remember where, I think I started with Ms. Brashio last time, so I'm gonna go to Ms. Malinowski.
Thank you. Thanks, Marty and team, for coming tonight. I don't have any other questions. I do echo Marty's comments of appreciation for the enforcement part. I think that was my only question last year. So thanks again for coming.
Mr. Shea?
No additional comments at this time.
All right, Mr. Stivers?
No additional questions. Good, good work. I think it's very helpful to get this clarified and move forward to the point where it's easier to administer. And again, I think this is a good step forward. So thank you, Marty. Thank you, Destin.
Ms. Brashio?
And, and I echo those comments, Marty. Thank you, Marty and team, for, for doing this. My question was similar to Marty's on enforcement, so I think we moved on from that. So again, thank you for coming, and thank you for keeping it fresh in our minds after a year has gone by. So thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And if you could do two things for me on the enforcement side, and it sounds like one of them you were already planning to do, which is to get the, the language as part of the, the rules and regs. I am assuming that those are not being created from whole cloth, that you're looking at some other places that already have, things like that? If you could point me to those as well. Again, it's just how I operate. And just see the structure of how they balance things and the like. I'd appreciate that as well. Fair enough?
Very fair. And I think that's, I think we have all that evidence. So I think Sarah and Destin, I mean, it's truly been a team effort, and I would say a lot, Destin and Sarah. I'm just the person presenting. So thank you to them.
All right. Marty, thank you very much. Sarah, doctor? And I think we're, I think we are all set. Oh, just the timetable. And you said you were in the process of writing them, and they're going to the planning board?
Yeah, so our planning board meetings will stay open till the, to the actual meeting date. So they, the, the warrant will be published with what we come up with language next week, but it is still subject to change, as we will not be closing our, our public meetings until probably in the night before the town meeting.
Okay. All right. Are any of you staying for the next one, or is that somebody else's responsibility, the site plan review?
No.
Sarah's staying.
No, Destin and I are off.
And Marty, you're staying or not?
I'm not. Destin and I are off. We're.
Okay.
I'll be back later.
All right, thanks very much. Sarah, is it somebody else besides you, or just you?
Mimi should be here as well. Mimi, the trout.
Okay, we can bring Mimi on. All right, Mimi or Sarah, who's gonna give us a little thumbnail sketch of where we are? It shouldn't be too complicated.
I'd be happy to.
Okay, Mimi, go ahead.
Let me just. Okay. So this is just a minor change to the site plan bylaw that we already have in effect in town. And what it does is it brings the responsibility of minor site plan review back to the planning board from the Site Plan Review Committee. And the reason for that is that it brings the bylaw in line with our Town Code, Chapter 9, Section 23, which requires the residency for any voting members of a, an appointed committee. It also brings it in line or into compliance with open meeting law and brings more transparency to the process.
I will, you know, you learn something new every day. I didn't even know we had a site plan review committee. Who are they? Who are they?
Department heads.
Oh, okay. Oh, interesting. Okay. And so this is, this is just, the idea of this is, is to, to take that responsibility away from them and plop it into the planning board?
Yeah. And I should also mention that it's very rare for a minor site plan. Since I've been on the planning board, we had one last meeting, and then I think that was the only one since I've been on in five years.
Okay, well, I feel better now that I haven't heard of it, so. All right, did anybody, it seems pretty straightforward. Does anybody have any questions about it? No. Oh, Mr. Stivers, were you on, were you on the site plan committee at some point, Sam? Is that the?
Not that, not that I'm aware of.
All right, go ahead, Sam.
While I was asleep, maybe. I do have a concern about this. I think this is generally an excellent step forward. One of the things that concerned me, in Section F, the planning board proposes to remove a sentence that provides for constructive approval if the decision is not rendered within 60 days. And I think, I understand the intent. And I think I I understand the intent of that, and I've had some conversations with folks about that. But it seems to me that there is a balance to be struck between the ability of the planning board to have the information they need to make a good decision and the ability of the applicant to get a timely response. And as Planning Board has pointed out, there is no state law requirement for site plan review, although in subdivision control law, the planning board administered, there are several places where constructive approval does occur or can occur. And I think one of the benefits of this new language is that it actually tightens the process requiring a complete application. Because one of the problems we've had historically is that people would file an application that's not complete, start the time clock on boards having to respond. And then you lose most of the time that you have to debate or deliberate with somebody finishing up the materials that they should have submitted in the first place. So I think this, this is something that seems to me the planning board can do within the sixty-day time period. I actually would be fine with extending it to ninety days to give them more flexibility. And the the way the the current language reads is they've got to do something in sixty days. They shall respond within sixty days. But there's no consequence if they don't, under the current proposed language, which seems to me to be sort of inconsistent. And Town Council has opined on this, and the language that he used are are phrases like, let's see, this, this constructive approval works against the planning board and is not favorable to the planning board. That, to me, is not a legal opinion, it's a policy opinion. And I think that we've got some obligation to think about the ability of of an applicant to get a timely decision with a consequence if the decision is not forthcoming. And from my experience on the zoning board, I think permitting boards have ways of actually keeping things moving or getting more time if they need it. If you, for example, have an applicant who's not providing the information you need during hearings, you can say, okay, we will approve this with the following conditions. And you can make conditions that deal with your concerns, and often that those conditions are things that the applicant is not enthusiastic about. And so they will agree that, yes, let's, let's agree to continue the hearing and come back and and continue to discuss and find a solution that works for both parties. So I think there are mechanisms that will allow people to have more time. I think that you need to consider not only what's favorable to the planning board, but what's favorable to the applicants. And I would suggest that something like a ninety-day time period here makes sense. And a little more tweaking on the language to make it consistent that continuations, again, toll that ninety-day limit as as additional conversations might go on with it. So seems to me that's a fair balance between applicants and planning board or permitting authority. And it works fine in my experience with the zoning board in terms of similar kinds of reviews and permitting decisions. So that would be my proposal.
Let me, let me follow up on that. I mean, it's an interesting point, Sam, what what is an applicant's relief if the planning board just doesn't act?
Nothing.
No, no, I'm asking the planning board.
I, well, first of all, that's never happened.
The But but let's assume that it happens, what's what's the relief?
I assume an appeal.
But there hasn't been a decision. I mean, that's the, that that's the thing, you've you've created a limbo. Because there hasn't been a, usually, usually for for something to be appealed, there has to be a either a final adjudication or an interim adjudication. Specifically, appeal is allowed. This doesn't, this doesn't allow for for a, any sort of either interim finality or finality, and you could end up in limbo. And I, so I guess that's the question, what happens if the planning board doesn't act? There's no final decision to appeal, but there's no action by the, the, there's no other relief available to the applicant. And I, I think Sam's point, ninety days seems fine to me, I, you know, hundred twenty. But but something in there that doesn't essentially just allow the planning board to sit on something without creating the finality that you correctly point out would be the the basis for an appeal.
So I'm not an attorney.
Me neither.
But the planning board sent this bylaw to our town council for review. And it was his opinion that that constructive approval should be stricken because it it disadvantages the town. It's not in the public interest to have a site plan, which is the nitty-gritty of a of a development to make sure that it can be built as proposed, that, you know, the drainage is right and all the nitty-gritty details. It's not in the public interest for that to be constructively approved without going through the proper review process.
I hear you on that, and 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 I I can understand why, why that would be the position. But if you take that out, it seems to me there needs to be, and Sam, I'm sorry to be hijacking, but it seems to me there has to be some provision, again, that that allows relief for the applicant. Again, I don't think an applicant has a problem, might disagree, if whatever they're requesting is denied, because then they do have the ability to appeal that. But what I can tell you for sure is that you can't appeal something that hasn't been done. And so if there hasn't been a decision, there's no right to appeal.
So there's, there's no project that only has site plan review. There's always some other component, a special permit or a building permit that goes along with it.
And what do they allow in terms of of either constructive review or time limitations or otherwise?
It depends.
But they all, but they have something.
I don't know about a, I don't know about a building department, but I know a special permit does.
Not sure, but but it strikes me that there's an easy way to fix this, and it it seems that from an, you want to have both sides of the of the the issue covered here. I get that that the planning board doesn't want to, you know, a an hourglass to be turned over, and they have to rush to finish before that hourglass empty, I get that. But by the same token, an applicant, an applicant, it seems to me, should have the ability to to know that at some point, the process is going to end. And that their rights then can be litigated elsewhere if they want to litigate them. Brian?
But it still says in there, though, that the planning board, and I'll just cut to the chase, that the planning board shall act within sixty days of receipt. And that's my Whether they approve, provide either an approval or a denial, the, it's incumbent upon the planning board to act. You know, again, unless it's extended. So their their failure to act violates that first sentence. Is that something that could be, you know, active, you know, with legal action taken on against the planning board for not acting?
But if that's what we want, but if that's, if that's the 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 end result that's being sought, just make it clear.
Yeah.
That's all.
No, I, and and certainly, if if they don't act and it's approval, it's then approved, certainly the applicant isn't going to appeal the decision.
Yeah, and I'll take a look at what Aldo wrote, and that's not the first time I'll disagree with another attorney. And I'll take a look, and maybe there's, maybe there's, whether it's what Brian just suggested or otherwise. But it just seems to me that 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 it'd be pretty easy to strike a balance there.
I don't mind a hundred days or even a hundred and twenty days, frankly, just to have some reasonable timeline on there.
I I just want to clarify, the problem is not having the hourglass turned over and the planning board not being able to review in the appropriate time. The problem is the the constructive approval of a project going forward without adequate review.
No, I understand, but it, but that happens because of the, if if it was a bad metaphor, I apologize. But but again, they, right now, from what Brian just said, that there is constru- I would clean up the language, but anyway, I'll take a look at what Aldo wrote. But it it just seems, it it's unnecessarily murky. That's my view.
My point, thank you. So I have to decide tonight, but I think it's an interesting question, I appreciate it.
Okay. I think, Sam, yours is the only hand up, I don't have anything. No, I think otherwise, we're all set. And maybe I'll take a look at the 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 stuff that's written, maybe I'll have a conversation with Aldo and and see if he can bring some additional clarity to things.
Okay.
All right. Sarah and Mimi, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Take care.
All right. The zoning district, I think this is not, we've had, God knows, we've had discussion about this. This is for, Lisa, you're going to give us a quick update on some some out-of-meeting process that's been going on, okay?
I do, I almost feel like I want to go out and then you can bring me back in, so I can be like everybody else. Just as a, as a quick update, so we did have a meeting regarding sending a letter to the split lot owners. In the interim of of getting the letter together, that's going to go out before the end of the week. And my recommendation was that that should come from the Board of Selectmen's Office. Is is a, again, just inviting the homeowners. The the goal, I think, is is to have two set dates for two different opportunities to speak to Adam Costa, you know, to have some questions asked. We're going to ask Adam to put his, kind of some of the guidelines that he gave us at the meeting. We're going to have them put that down so we can send that with the letter as well. That's the goal, so the homeowners know what we're looking for. We did already have a homeowner reach out that has no interest in taking their parcel and making it residential. They want to leave it split within the downtown district. So we're meeting again on Thursday to go over that letter, members of the EDC, myself. And so that correspondence will go out. I wanted to acknowledge that we have gotten three additional pieces of correspondence since the forum that we did last week. I know Karina from the planning office sent us some information today with some comments. Mr. Hokinson had provided some information, and so did Mr. Perry. So I just wanted to acknowledge that their their comments and their letters were received. Also, we had a brief discussion on what we view at this point is some of the larger five outstanding issues that came out of the public forum. The two thousand, three thousand, whether the FAR, what that number should be, FAR or the coverage area, the map, the fourth story, and there's some question on the ten percent language for the bottom floor for the mixed use. So we're working towards that. Also, I just wanted to thank the public for providing feedback and helping as we move forward in in guiding us in a collaborative manner. That's very much appreciated. And one thing I will throw throw out as we move forward and we're getting closer to town meeting, I think potentially this discussion, and depending on what we get through the discussion earlier on a fall town meeting, might come into play for this, depending on how far we get prior to town meeting with some of these outstanding issues. So I will kind of leave it at that. So we are in the process, again, of getting the letters out by the end of the week, hopefully meeting with homeowners next week. We're going to do a morning, a daytime and a nighttime. That's kind of the goal, so we can make sure that we cover our bases and and all split lot owners have an opportunity.
Yeah, no, Lisa, that that was a terrific idea of yours to to not speculate on what those people think about canon should be done with their property, but actually find out for sure. So I think that's a very good idea. And as as part of that, I mean, there's whether or not, I think we probably, particularly if we're going to, if this is going to be on for the annual town meeting, we're going to want to have another forum, presumably sometime in in May. We're kind of running out of days.
I know.
Maybe the one, one, one of the very few things that that will get, be allowed on the agenda for our meeting with advisory next week will be a discussion about scheduling, some stuff that 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 decide whether or not we want it on before-town meeting, after-town meeting, or otherwise. And this is depending on what we decide about a fall town meeting, about where this falls, et cetera, et cetera, be part of that.
Yep.
Anything about what Lisa has touched upon for the downtown district? Okay, great.
Excellent, Marty, there's a couple of hands up from planning folks.
All right, well, they're both planning board folks, let's bring them both over.
Karina, you're on mute.
Sorry, here I am.
There you are, welcome.
Okay, welcome back, Marty. Hello, Karina.
Hi, sorry, I just had to race in, I was trying to get in on the site plan part, but I couldn't connect from home.
I was just covering for Karina if she couldn't get on, so I'll defer to Karina.
For site plan or for downtown district?
For downtown district.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, is it too late to comment on the site plan?
Is it, is it short?
Yes, very short.
Okay.
I caught the last bit of Sam Stivers' opinion on the constructive approval portion. And I just wanted to point out that a couple of the reasons in a recent legal opinion from Town Council, if I may just refer to that, is that if a constructive grant occurred, even with the best efforts of the planning board, it could result in the legal effect of approving an incomplete plan without sufficient conditions or terms which could be adverse to the public interest. I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses here either, so I'm reading a little bit slow. So that was one of the first, that was one of the reasons in Al, in Town Council's clarification of a recent legal opinion request that culminated from Andrew Dennington's question regarding the constructive approval and why it was stricken. The second part of, the second reason is, given the nature of the existing case law, an unscrupulous applicant could attempt to manipulate the process of review that nearly traps the planning board into an unanticipated constructive grant. It is much preferred that there be sufficient time identified in the bylaw for review with the traditional understanding that additional agreed-upon extensions would be available. And what I believe Town Council is alluding there to is that we have a planning department that currently is staffed with two people, me, myself and with Sarah. And I know that since I started with the town as the town planner, we use the method of applicants requesting the planning board grant an extension to the action deadline. And that has worked out extremely well. And what that does is it encourages and channels the or encourages and guides the applicant into continuously working with the planning board to come to resolution and a win-win situ, a win-win solution to these applications when there are differences that come up. You know, in recent case, and I don't want to go too much into it, but this caused a constructive approval actually caused a very big issue with the town and the planning board and the applicant as a developer. So I think that second reason from Town Council somewhat alludes to that fact. So Sarah and I have both worked very well with the applicants who are very amenable to, if they know they still have to work some issues out, they sign a form which requests an extension to the action deadline, which the planning board votes on, and then officially extends that timeframe to a date that's agreed to by both the applicant and the planning board. And that gets filed with the town clerk. So I just want to make sure that, you know, it's, it's clear out there that I understand the constructive approval opinions of Sam and Andrew Dennington. But I also strongly support the idea that we work with these extension requests very well. And we haven't had a problem with them in the four years that I have worked in the planning department. So sorry if that was one long sentence, but I just wanted to make that clear, that there is a method to address and leave that constructive approval language out and still have an effective method where both parties, both sides have a fair and equitable way to resolve coming to a solution and eventually a a a vote and, you know, we don't want to go through things where you have to condition it with eighty conditions. That's not real, that's not real.
Karina, Karina, I think, Karina, I think you get it. Karina, Karina, I think, Karina, I think you get it.
Okay, good. I'm sorry, I'm really good at long sentences.
That was exactly my point.
I want to take a look at that legal stuff.
Yeah.
Good. I, I just want to make sure you're aware that there are two opinions out there that we could provide you if that's applicable.
No, I'm going to take a look at those. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
So Karina, if I may, Marty, if I may, sorry.
Yep.
So on, on the, I know you said you had, regarding the downtown district, you wanted to speak to that as well. So, okay, so I just wanted to let you know that I, I did get your email, but I haven't had a chance, because we got it just before the meeting. I haven't had a chance to go through it, and I think one of the things Marty had alluded to was I had mentioned some of the outstanding issues that you have in your email that I think we're going to put, put forward some information for the board to discuss at the meeting next Tuesday as we go forward. So I just wanted to acknowledge, I had said prior that, you know, we did get your email.
My apologies, too, because I typed, I was typing like, at like 5 o'clock today. So I'm very, because we even just got an email from Mark saying, please don't do these last-minute things. And I was like, but I just had the first chance to assemble those thoughts, so.
Nope, I appreciate it, but I just wanted you to know that, that I haven't had, really had a chance to sit down and go through them. I plan on, on, on doing that probably tomorrow, and I was going to reach out to you tomorrow anyway.
Yeah, I don't think it's worth it to have a discussion about it tonight.
And we have a planning board public hearing continued on Monday, so there's another opportunity for discussing.
Okay.
Perfect. Karina, thank you so much, and thank you for, for putting these thoughts down. I, I, I think they were kind of in line with some of the things I already mentioned earlier, so I think we're all working on the same page.
And if I may, could I just add one small clarification?
Please.
Okay, um, one of the, one of the stickling points is the language to change the zoning map. So when Sarah and I did research on where the BV district originated from, so we could see how the boundaries of that, which the EDC is using, kind of came to be now. The warrant articles, I believe, that had zoning, zoning bylaw changes that affected the zoning map, included at the end, the request is part of the article that if the article passes, then the zoning map gets voted on to also be changed, meaning.
Okay.
The boundaries don't have to change, but if the name is changing, we have to update the map, and it has to be voted at town, and it's usually voted as part of the article.
Okay. Okay, so that makes sense, to make sure that we include that language.
I think that's present. Thank you.
Karina, thank you so much. That's very helpful.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Next up is the zoning. You're all set, Lisa, on that? Okay, is the, is the noise bylaw, and I know there was email traffic and communication with the, the sponsor of that, but Mark, you got the sense that we were not going to hear from him tonight?
Yeah, the, the last email that I saw is that Mr. Lapine would prefer to have any questions the board has for him in advance, and he was not sure he was going to be able to make it tonight. I do believe he's also scheduled for advisory and tomorrow night, so.
I don't know, my questions are going to be in advance.
I've got a couple, but I'd rather talk with him than.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we're done with the, with the noise bylaw. Anything else on, on any of the articles before, on any of these articles before we move on? No? Okay. Reports? Nada for me. Is a board of health update from, is that from you, Sam?
Yeah, that, that was from me. I, I was not sure what else was going to be on, and we've covered a lot of that at this point. The only other thing I would add is that I think the board of health is making good progress with this regional vaccination center out in Westboro, so I would urge people to keep their eye on that one as vaccine becomes available. I think that's going to create another good opportunity for Southboro residents to get vaccinated, and I think they're working on getting vaccine for that site, and there's a lot of cooperation between various towns to make that happen fairly shortly, I believe. So again, that's a good opportunity. People stay tuned and keep an eye on that.
And get vaccinated. It only, your arm only hurts for a while.
I have one, Marty, if I may.
Yep.
So I wanted to offer condolences to the Hubley family on the passing of Linda. Linda was a longtime volunteer in a lot of different ways, a big conservationist, and she had volunteered at the schools. She was, I just want to make sure I get this all right. She was an election worker, a photographer for the fire department, the owner and editor of the Southboro Online News. She received several awards. She was one of the first couple women to receive the Unsung Heroin Award, which is, is a huge honor given to women. She has received the Elaine Beals Conservation Award and the Al Henry Award. And, you know, Linda and her, her family have a huge, a huge history of, of serving the town. So I just, on behalf of the board, would like to offer our deepest condolences to Skip and, and the family on the passing of Linda, and her, her loss will be felt for many years to come. So that's all. Thank you.
Well said, Lisa. Moving on to Mr. Purple. Anything on your report, Mark?
Uh, just, just a couple of things real quick. I do want to thank Vanessa for more than ably covering last week while I was out on vacation. I'm still not good at, at appreciating vacation as much as, as you probably should, but I'm learning. I do want to piggyback off of Sam's comment. I believe that the target date for vaccine, the earliest we could see anything for the regional clinic, is April 15th. It's, it's great that we got approved, but it's unfortunate it's taking so long, because a lot of our most vulnerable population is already going to be, you know, taken care of by the time that, that we do get vaccines. So hopefully, you know, there, there's still, you know, will be some benefit. And the only other piece is the putting green at the, at the golf course. The architect is coming out for a site visit on Saturday, so I may be popping over just to, to check that out. The goal is to have plans done in the next month or so. Project bid and ready to, ready to begin construction in August. So, and then I think that is going to close the book on the projects that we have, at least on, on deck at golf. But I know that there is more that the management company would like to see done, so we can then look at discussing new projects.
Cool. All right, consent agenda. I'm looking at you, Chelsea Malinowski.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Anything else?
No.
All right, I'll move that we approve consent agenda, consent agenda items B through F.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Braccio.
Aye.
Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shay.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye. Those are approved unanimously. Item A.
I'm just going to abstain.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to abstain.
Oh, okay. That's it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, with that, I will move that we approve consent agenda item A.
Second.
Brian beat you that time, Sam.
He did.
Seconded by Mr. Shay. Ms. Braccio.
Aye.
Mr. Shay.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye, and Ms. Malinowski's abstention is noted.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out, I did get an email earlier. I thought if Mr. Hegarty was here, he may say something, but he is going to need wet signatures on, on that document, so he may be reaching out to plan visitations to each of you to, to make that happen.
Okay.
Just a heads up.
Okay. All right, item six, public comment, round two. Going once, going twice? I move to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Stivers beat you that time, Brian.
No, I, I won't throw the challenge flag. Game's over.
All right, Ms. Braccio.
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski.
Aye.
Mr. Shay.
Aye.
Mr. Stivers.
Aye.
Mr. Healy is aye, and we'll see you next Tuesday with the folks from advisory. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.